Good afternoon and welcome to the Committees on Public Safety jointly with Technology. At this time, we ask that you please place phones on vibrate or silent mode. Thank you, Chairs. We are ready to begin.
Good afternoon and welcome to our hearing. I'm Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez and I'm the Chair for the Committee on Technology. I'm pleased to join Councilmember Hanks for this hearing on the critically important Post Act. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss a matter of paramount importance, the New York Police Department's compliance with the public oversight of surveillance technology, also known as the Post Act. I come to this hearing with both gratitude and concern. Gratitude because the Post Act represents a pivotal step forward in our society's commitment to transparency and accountability in the use of surveillance technologies by our law enforcement agencies. Concerns because we have not been able to meet the goals laid out in the legislation and compliance has not been fully achieved. The Post Act was crafted with the intent of creating a balance between public safety and the fundamental safeguarding of civil liberties. It requires the NYPD to provide clear and comprehensive guidelines regarding the deployment and implications of surveillance technologies. With technologies' constant and rapid development, it's vital that our regulations keep pace through the good governance measures of transparency and accountability. However, NYPD's own Office of the Inspector General, OIG, found that PD was not in full compliance with the Post Act. Instead, OIG determined that NYPD had taken advantage of loopholes and ambiguities to evade essential transparency measures. As the City Council, we are responsible for ensuring that the NYPD fully adheres to the principles and requirements of the Post Act. Instead, OIG determined that NYPD -- oh, no, wait. We are responsible for -- oh, sorry, of the Post Act. To this end, we are convening to also discuss several bills that will fortify the law and ensure its robust enforcement. In addition to understanding what technologies the PD is using, we also need transparency into how the PD uses data-sharing agreements, how long it retains data, and whether information is shared with other agencies or entities, including federal law enforcement. Transparency in these matters is not merely a technical matter of compliance, but a hallmark of responsible governance. It is imperative that we examine the use of certain technologies such as aerial drones and the subway RoboCop and understand why the NYPD has not issued impact and use policies for these clearly novel technologies. This merits further scrutiny and may warrant future amendments to existing legislation. We must also consider the role of the Office of Technology and Innovation in oversight and risk management. OTI has testified that they are responsible for agencies' technology procurement and management, a critical issue that we are exploring here today. How does OTI inform the NYPD's solicitation for new technologies? How does OTI ensure that surveillance technologies are audited and scrutinized effectively? And what mechanisms are in place to guarantee that these tools are used responsibly and within the boundaries of the law? We hold this hearing not as adversaries, but as stewards of the public trust. The concerns about the lack of transparency come both from multiple branches of city government and outside of it. Our objective is clear: to ensure that the Post Act fulfills its intended purpose of providing transparency and accountability in the use of surveillance technology by the NYPD. It is our collective duty to protect the rights and privacy of our citizens while also upholding the principles of public safety. Given the accommodations these committees provided to the NYPD in the rescheduling of this hearing, we're looking forward to NYPD's full engagement with questions from council members, as well as listening to testimony from the public. I hope you will stay as long as you can. And I look forward to the insights that will emerge from this hearing as we work together to achieve these crucial objectives. And I'd like to recognize Technology Committee members who are present, Councilmember Abreu. And that's it. And then I'll pass it over to Chair Hanks.
Thank you so much, Chair Gutierrez. Good afternoon. Happy Friday and happy holidays. I am Councilmember Camila Hanks and the Chair on the Committee of Public Safety. And again, I am joined by Chair Gutierrez of the Technology Committee and public safety members and councilmembers Abreu, Kabon, Bachar, and we are also joined by our public advocate. Welcome to today's joint hearing of the Public Safety and Technology Committee, where we will be examining the NYPD's use of surveillance and implementation of the Public Oversight Surveillance Technology Act, the Post Act. We will also be hearing related legislative proposals aimed at enhancing transparency in the NYPD's use of surveillance and improving privacy safeguards and oversight in the department's use of surveillance. The New York City Police Department relies on a wide array of surveillance technologies to fulfill its mission in maintaining public safety. These technologies have the potential to gather vast amounts of personal data and they raise valid concerns about potential impacts on privacy and civil liberties of civilians. To address some of those concerns, this council enacted the Post Act in 2020, which was designed to provide increased transparency oversight regarding NYPD's acquisition of use of surveillance technologies. Specifically, the Post Act mandates that NYPD publish impact and use policies, IUPs, for all surveillance technologies used by the department and continually produce IUPs upon the acquisition of new technologies. As required by the Post Act, the IUPs must provide detailed information about the technology's capacities, capabilities, department guidelines on access and such use of technologies, data sharing and retention policies, and more. The Post Act also requires the opportunity for the public to have input on all draft IUPs, to provide a 45-day period for public comment on draft policies in order to have public concerns taken into account when NYPD creates its final policy. The NYPD has made great strides in publishing the IUPs for various surveillance technologies covering a wide range of capabilities. However, the recent evaluations by the Office of the Inspector General of NYPD raised shortcomings in published policies. Notably, the OIG NYPD described generic boilerplate language used in the majority of the IUPs and the grouping of related technologies under the single IUPs, which impeded the Inspector General's ability to conduct meaningful oversight and audits of the department's use of surveillance as required by the Post Act. Our goal for this hearing is to assess the NYPD's progress in implementing the Post Act, consider legislative enhancements to the Act, to hear concerns of the public, and examine how NYPD seeks to maintain a delicate balance between using surveillance to secure public safety while ensuring civil liberties. Additionally, at this hearing, we will be hearing -- we will be considering and hearing four pieces of legislation in the Public Safety Committee: Intro 1193, sponsored by Councilmember Farias; legislation to strengthen the OIG NYPD's capacity to conduct meaningful audits of the NYPD-published IUPs; Intro 1195, sponsored by Councilmember Hudson; legislation to require NYPD to publish a written policy that establishes procedures and regulations for its use of facial recognition technologies and conduct biannual public audits of the department's use of facial recognition technology; and Intro 1207, sponsored by Councilmember Juan; legislation to amend the existing Post Act to ensure IUPs contain sufficient detail and specificity needed to enable meaningful oversight and regular audits. Finally, we will hear Intro number 1047, sponsored by Councilmember Vernikoff, in relation to requiring -- okay, we will not be doing that. I was just patted. So, to that end, I would like to again thank Councilmember Gutierrez, Chair of the Committee of Technology, our staff for all the hard work for putting this hearing together, and I look forward to an engaging and constructive dialogue with all stakeholders, including representatives from the administration, advocates, and members of the public, to chart a pathway forward that best serves all of New Yorkers. Thank you for your participation in this critical discussion. And now, I'll turn it over to our public advocate for his opening statement. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As mentioned, my name is Jermaine Williams. I'm the public advocate for the City of New York. I want to thank Chair Gutierrez and Chair Hanks and the Committee members for holding this hearing. Fundamentally, everyone is protected by the Fourteenth Amendment's right to privacy in the United States Constitution. While the New York Police Department has a responsibility to secure the safety of New Yorkers, we also must be extremely cautious in adapting technology that violates civil rights. We all know that technology is coming. It is not something that we can prevent, but we have to make sure that it is instituted while honoring civil rights. Individuals should have a reasonable expectation that they can move around freely without overuse of surveillance by law enforcement. Law enforcement agencies that recently adopted facial recognition technology are also being sued for racial and gender discrimination. Detroit has seen three lawsuits for wrongful arrests stemming from facial recognition technology. Researchers at MIT reported in January 2019 that racial recognition software marketed by Amazon misidentified darker-skinned women 31% of the time, while other studies have shown, quote, "shown that algorithms used in facial recognition return false at a higher rate for African-Americans than white Americans unless explicitly recalibrated for a black population," end quote. Specifically, the Amazon technology misidentifies people with dark complexions 15% of the time as compared to only 3% for people with light complexions. These findings prompted experts at Google, Facebook, and Microsoft to sign a letter calling on Amazon to stop selling its facial recognition technology to law enforcement. With mass surveillance, personal information is more likely to be at risk. It is no exaggeration to say that leaks of personal data can put people's lives at risk. Commuting patterns, frequent locations, or other identifying information threaten survivors of domestic violence, as well as anyone in a marginalized group who may be targeted. For example, an Anchorage police officer used an internal database to find and sexually assault a woman. How the NYPD uses technology must be closely monitored and abuses held accountable. Additionally, hacking may not even be necessary for those looking to cause harm. Surveillance contractors often sell their data to third parties, which leads to poorly monitored databases being created. I want to thank my colleagues for introducing legislation that will create more accountability and transparency around the police's use of technology. Strict monitoring is necessary to oversee the NYPD's vast toolkit of surveillance technologies. There's reason to be concerned when NYPD utilizes many technologies such as robot police officers in Times Square, drones at crime scenes, X-ray vans, and GPS tracking launches to tag and track vehicles without oversight of how these technologies are stored and tracking data on New Yorkers. The NYPD opting into the Amazon Ring, its program itself, is cause for concern ultimately. The council must take concrete steps to limit the use of facial recognition technology in the future when it comes to better policing, just like better education, better medication, better medicine. This is a conversation that always has to continue, and I don't think it would ever stop, nor should it. And I hope these conversations can happen with that spirit in mind. Lastly, you mentioned the tragic event that happened yesterday where technology was used. Unfortunately, we still saw a fatality and a police officer shot. Thankfully, the officer was wearing his bulletproof vest and will go home to his family. Kennedy was barricaded and was killed. But technology was used there, and unfortunately, we still had a familiar outcome. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. You can swear in, folks.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. From the administration, we'll be hearing testimony from the NYPD and the Office of Technology and Innovation to begin with. From NYPD, we have Chief Jeffrey Madry and Deputy Commissioner Michael Gerber. And for Office of Technology and Innovation, we have Michael Fitzpatrick. There's a bunch of other folks who are gonna be available, I think, for question and answer for NYPD, which is Assistant Deputy Commissioner Seth Severino, Chief Privacy Officer Emily Gold, Managing Attorney Melanie Braverman, and Chief Contracting Officer Nicole Mendoza. So, can you all just raise your right hand and affirm the following: you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and to answer honestly to council member questions. I acknowledge that you all have said yes, so you may begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Hanks, Chair Gutierrez, and members of the council. My name is Michael Gerber, and I am the Deputy Commissioner of Legal Matters for the NYPD. Since the Post Act was passed in 2020, the NYPD has worked to meet its obligations under the law. Within 180 days after the passage of the Act, the department published 36 draft impact and use policies, or IUPs, containing more than 300 pages of information regarding the department's surveillance technologies. Following a comment period, the IUPs were finalized in April 2021. The IUPs are publicly available on our website and provide a wide range of information concerning capabilities of our surveillance technologies, as well as policies and procedures relating to those surveillance technologies. The release of our IUPs and subsequent amendments have dramatically increased the department's public disclosures regarding its surveillance technologies. The Post Act strikes a balance between a number of critical interests: transparency, public safety, innovation, and administrability. We disclose a wide range of information without compromising our ability to solve crimes and keep people safe. It has been suggested that we are grouping multiple surveillance technologies within a single IUP in a manner that undermines transparency. That is not the case. Within a given surveillance technology, there will be different types of equipment and models, various forms in which the surveillance technology may be deployed, and a range of uses for that surveillance technology. We have not done a separate IUP and comment period for each type of hardware that deploys a given surveillance technology. Such an approach is not required by the Post Act. Having a separate IUP for each brand of camera that we use, or each variation on a given type of surveillance technology, would result in repetition and confusion. In fact, it would decrease transparency, as the nature of a particular surveillance technology used by the department would be scattered across multiple IUPs. It would also be administratively unworkable. Itemizing surveillance technology used in covert operations would endanger public safety, provide a detailed roadmap to those who wish to do harm, and put our undercovers at risk. The Post Act accounts for all this. It makes clear that each surveillance technology must be covered within an IUP, but that enhancements to a surveillance technology, or the deployment of a new surveillance technology -- or the deployment of a surveillance technology for a new purpose, or in a new manner, do not result in a new IUP and comment period. Rather, the department is to write an addendum to a pre-existing IUP. I want to emphasize that in these circumstances, proceeding by addendum rather than doing a new IUP is not contrary to the Post Act. It is what the Post Act mandates, and it gives the department the flexibility to use pre-existing surveillance technology in new ways while maintaining transparency with the public. I would now like to take a moment to comment on the bills being heard today. Intro 1193 would require the department to provide a DOI upon request, a list of surveillance technologies, information on data access and retention policies, and quarterly updates on new and discontinued technologies. The department takes DOI's oversight mission very seriously and works with DOI to ensure that it can fulfill that mission. We are committed to continuing to do so. The department looks forward to working with the council to craft this legislation and to ensure that DOI has the information it needs to fulfill its audit function. Intro 1195 would require the department to establish and publish procedures and regulations for the use of facial recognition technology. The bill would also require the department to conduct biannual audits of our use of facial recognition and to provide the results to DOI, as well as publish them on our website. I would note that the section of the patrol guide addressing facial recognition is posted on the department's website, together with answers to frequently asked questions regarding our use of facial recognition. We have no issue with continuing to publicize this information, and we are open to providing more data regarding our use of the surveillance technology. We would, however, like to have a dialogue with the council regarding the contours and scope of the audit. The bill as presently drafted requires granular detail regarding each itemized use of facial recognition technology, and that, at least at present, is administratively unfeasible and could interfere with our ability to use this important law enforcement tool. We believe that we can work with the council to craft an audit that will further increase transparency without impeding critical law enforcement efforts. Intro 1207 would require a separate IUP for each surveillance technology used by the NYPD, regardless of whether such technology overlaps in functionality or capability with any other technology for which an IUP already exists. We are unsure what is intended by this language. Does this mean that every time the department intends to purchase a different make or model of camera with even slightly altered functionality, a new IUP would have to be issued? If we replace officers' smartphones, would a new IUP be required? Does this mean that the department would be required to do an IUP for a new covert undercover recording device? These are not rhetorical questions. The language of the bill as presently drafted is unclear. If the answer to these questions is yes, the bill would be extremely harmful to the functioning of the department and could serve to compromise public safety. The department opposes this legislation as drafted because it would upset the careful balance that lies at the heart of the Post Act. We look forward to a continuing dialogue with the council regarding the proposed bills and, more generally, regarding the Post Act. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on this matter, and we look forward to answering any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, and thank you all for all the hard work that you do for this city. We just want to recognize that publicly. Before I get into questions, I would love to recognize Councilmember Joseph Areola Palladino Holden and Mealy have joined us. Excellent. So, can you provide an overview of the surveillance technologies currently used by the NYPD?
So, again, good afternoon. Good afternoon. I think, when you look at our surveillance technology, some of the more widespread technology that we use is, of course, our license plate readers, our Argus cameras, our body-worn cameras assigned to our offices. I think those are our most widespread-used technology that we presently have in the department that's used on a daily basis. And then, when you drill down, we have been implementing our drones. Of course, we use cameras fixed and mobile. And, you know, you touched on facial identification, but I think that's pretty much the big picture. I mean, we could drill down more, but that's the big picture of what we use on a daily basis.
Thank you. The Commissioner testified that if we would have a report for each IUP, that it would decrease transparency, as the nature of the particular surveillance that is used by the department would be scattered across multiple. And, you know, for administratively, itemizing surveillance technologies used in covert operations would endanger public safety. Talk a little bit about this specifically for the public to understand what that actually means. It's in the second paragraph of your testimony. I think we should just, like, unpack that a little bit.
Sure, absolutely.
Thanks.
So, for each surveillance technology, we have an IUP. Now, for any -- for a given surveillance technology, that could be deployed in different ways. So, for example, situational awareness cameras. We can deploy those cameras in a variety of contexts. You could have different platforms, different purposes for which we use those cameras. If we were to have a separate IUP for each type of camera that we use, or each different place where we could put a camera, or each different way we could deploy a camera, that's not what the Post Act requires, but it also would be incredibly difficult for the public to understand what's being done. In other words, as it stands now, if a member of the public wants to understand how we're using situational awareness cameras, and they can go look at the situational awareness camera IUP, and that will lay that out. If we had numerous IUPs for each different type of camera, again, putting aside the administrability issue, you'd have tremendous repetition, obviously, across the IUP. You'd have tremendous overlap. But also, I don't think a member of the public would know where to look. Is it this type of camera? Is it that type of camera? There actually now, if you're a member of the public and you want to understand a variety of matters regarding a given surveillance technology, you go to the IUP for that surveillance technology, and then you can learn more about it in a variety of ways.
Thank you. So, also, you know, to get a little dig deeper into that, you also testified that the department is now required to write an addendum to a pre-existing IUP. What is the timeframe for submitting such addendums, and how many addendums, if any, have been done thus far? Would you have to have that information?
Yes. So, the statute actually does not give a timeframe for the addendums. It doesn't -- the statute is silent on that. And, you know, we have undertaken to do that, frankly, in -- we try to do it in a reasonable timeframe, in a fair timeframe, but the statute actually is silent on that matter. With regard to which IUPs we've done addendums to, I can just -- I can tell you. It's body-worn cameras, cell site simulators, CCTV systems, Kalia collection system, the criminal group database, the digital fingerprint scanning devices, facial recognition, portable electronic devices, situational awareness cameras, thermographic cameras, and unmanned aircraft systems. So, we have done addendums. Additional information has been provided with regard to each of those IUPs over time.
Thank you so much. Does the NYPD track to the extent of which the data is gathered by surveillance technologies and they're shared with external entities?
I'm not trying to understand the question exactly.
So, does the NYPD have specific data sharing and retention policies? I apologize. I kind of jumped to the question before really kind of unpacking it for you. I apologize. So, you know, do we have specific data sharing and retention policies for the use of data gathered through surveillance technologies? Are there uniform policies and protections in terms and agreements with external entities? And then, I moved into saying, do we have a policy on how we share?
Right. So, there are a number of different pieces to that. So, first of all, we obviously do have a set of rules, whether by statute or by, you know, a policy regarding data retention, personal identifying information. There's a whole set of rules about that. And I should say, by the way, that those sets of rules are going to be, at least as a baseline matter, consistent across multiple IUPs, which is one of the issues with regard to, you know, boilerplate. I think it's important to emphasize, this was mentioned earlier, it's not boilerplate. It's our policies. And it is a great example. We're gonna have a baseline set of rules and regulations about data privacy, data security, that are going to be consistent across our IUPs and across the department, and that's a good thing. So, I do want to say that, and we can come back to this maybe, but on the boilerplate piece, it's not boilerplate. It's the consistency that I think one would want across an organization to have baseline rules and regulations that apply, and then for particular IUPs, maybe additional -- but for particular surveillance technologies, there might be additional rules, restrictions on top of that. Coming back to your question, so, there are rules about our ability to share information, obviously. We do share information with law enforcement partners in the course of criminal investigations. That does happen, of course. I should emphasize that we think of that in terms of investigations. We organize that by investigations, not by surveillance technology. If we are partnering with a federal, state, or local law enforcement agency on a particular investigation, obviously, there's sharing between the law enforcement partners, as one would expect. With regard to, you know, vendors or third parties where we have, you know, contracts, there is a standard, I think it's Exhibit A, that is appended to these contracts, that has our standard rules regarding -- that has our standard rules regarding data privacy and data sharing. I think that's actually available online. And that's sort of a standard form that we use in a wide variety of agreements with third parties.
Thank you so much. So when you're gathering this data, does NYPD ever use this for commercial purposes?
NYPD? No, absolutely not.
Okay, great. Thank, so how does NYPD seek to balance the demands for public transparency regarding its use of surveillance technologies? The department needs to protect sensitive information regarding operational protocols.
Right, and we're very sensitive to that. Obviously transparency is crucial. There are, of course, obviously, public safety issues, and there's a balance there. And, you know, with regard to our Post Act IUPs, we do try to provide a lot of information about our technologies. Obviously, you always can provide more detail, and there's a question of line drawing that always exists when you're doing this. And we do try to strike that balance. We want to, we want to provide the information called for, we need to provide the information called for by the Post Act, and we do that. But when we've drafted the IUPs and then when we do the addendums to the IUPs, we are sensitive not to compromise public safety when we're doing that.
Thank you. The NYPD, you also previously expressed concerns about the extent to which disclosure of these surveillance technologies can impede the ability to conduct investigations. Could you provide specific examples of how disclosing information required by the Post Act could reveal vulnerabilities and compromise intelligence operations?
So I want to be very clear. I think that the, the way the Post Act is written now, I don't think it calls for that. I have concerns that the Post Act could be amended in a way that would raise those issues. So just to take an example, we have an IUP for covert recording devices. And it contains information about rules, policies, how we might use covert recording devices. We do not list out in the IUP, or otherwise publicly, the different types of locations or places where an undercover might have a covert recording device, for obvious reasons. Now, that is consistent with the Post Act as written, and I, we're very comfortable with that. I do have concerns that Intro 1207, again, I think the language, it's not clear what's intended, and I, we're genuinely unsure about that. But when you start talking about doing a new IUP, for anything, any surveillance technology utilized by the department, even if there's an overlap in functionality or capability, I think it raises a question at least, is that demanding that each time we find a new place to put a covert recording device on an undercover, we have to do an IUP for that? I find it difficult to imagine that that's what's intended. I think the language could be read that way, though.
Yeah, I could read it that way. I'm going to ask a few other questions, and then we're going to take a two-minute break to kind of switch gears. And this is really surrounding around public notice, you know, and comments. You know, what are the protocols in place to provide the public with notice about newly-acquired and deployed surveillance technologies?
So, so if you have a new surveillance technology, the Post Act essentially requires 90-day, you do a draft IUP, and then there's a 45-day comment period. The draft IUP is published, it's available to the public, and then individuals can comment on it, and then it's at least another 45 days until the IUP becomes final. So when you have a new surveillance technology, there's this sort of comment period that the Post Act provides for. When you have not a new surveillance technology, but a pre-existing surveillance technology that's being deployed in a new manner or for a new purpose, or even when there's an enhancement to that surveillance technology, what the Post Act says is, you don't have to do a new IUP, you don't have to have a comment period, you do an addendum to the publicly-available IUP, and in that way, the public is told, hey, we are taking this pre-existing surveillance technology, and we are deploying it in a new manner or for a new purpose, or with some enhancement.
Thank you so much. I'm going to conclude my first round, and I'm going to pass it along to Chair Gutierrez next.
Thank you so much, Chair. And I know we have limited time, and I know members have questions, so I will do a couple of questions and then pass it off to members, so they can get their questions in. So I wanted to ask if you could expand a little bit on the data sharing question that Chair Hanks asked. Would you be able to tell me with more details, kind of how the, whatever data is collected from any and all of the surveillance devices, how you all determine, you know, which agencies or external or third-party agencies get which data?
Sure. So there is a whole set of rules about that. We have our Agency Privacy Officer here and Emily Gold, and if it's okay, she can come to the microphone and answer your question.
Yes, I would love that. And I'd also like to recognize Councilmembers De La Rosa, Althea Stevens, and Councilmember Darlene Mealy, and Councilmembers Eric Blatcher. Anyone else? Bob Holden, the committee staff.
Hi, good afternoon. So in terms of how we determine whether data is shared, that's really a request that comes from an operational standpoint, and then it's assessed by relevant operational commands and for legal concerns, which is where I come in to determine whether or not we're allowed to share the information under, as the Agency Privacy Officer, I'm looking at the Identifying Information Law, and whether or not identifying information is being asked for, and whether we can be giving it under the citywide guidance.
So have there been instances where you have been sharing, where the agency has been sharing data?
Yeah, we share data.
Okay. And what are, can you, can you share what, which agencies?
Well, we, across the board, we share data broadly. I mean, if you're looking, if we're focusing down on Post Act technologies and kind of surveillance technologies, I think the most relevant data shares would be with our case management systems, because that's how, sorry?
Still internally with PD?
Well, you're asking for sharing outside of the agency?
Yes, well, I'm asking, yes, exactly, for all other agencies.
Right. So we share information in our case management systems with, like, the prosecutor's offices, because that's how they get the information there that we have to give them for discovery demands. Similarly, that's how, that is how and why we share, like, body-worn camera footage as well.
Okay.
All of that is governed by, and every data share is governed by, an agreement that outlines how the data is transferred, like, technologically, and how it is meant to be utilized, stored, and limits its use by the other entity and what they're allowed to do with it.
And are there instances where data is shared with outside of city agencies, federal agencies, or third parties?
Federal agencies, most of our sharing is actually for ongoing investigations. It's a lot of with our task forces. So like our federal task forces, like FBI. That is also done by MOU, but most of that information is being shared during an ongoing and open investigation, so.
And what about ICE?
ICE?
Absolutely not.
No, right? Yeah.
We do not share any of the surveillance technology data with ICE.
I hope not. What about any third parties?
Surveillance technology, a third party is not that I can think of.
There may be situations, just to be clear, where depending on the surveillance technology, there may be a vendor who has access
Sure.
to information, right? And then that's going to be governed by a contract, and again, with Exhibit A, which restricts their ability to use that data.
So when we have a technology where part of the use of the technology requires it to interact with, like, the vendor's system, they are bound by, what Commissioner Gerber is talking about, New York City Appendix A, which has confidentiality provisions within that, but then that is also, there might be further provisions for data security if it interacts with their cloud, for example. There's a cloud writer that's a citywide document that we could be using,
Sure.
or identifying information writer, or the privacy writer. It depends on what they're getting and how it's stored.
And who is, what's the internal check on that? That there is, like, this particular vendor is abiding by all that? What does that, what does that look like?
So that's, that comes during while we're negotiating the terms of the agreement to utilize the technology.
Okay.
So that's assessed.
But while they're accessing that information or during that duration, is there any additional, is there any additional checks after, once the vendor has, has everything that they asked for?
I think that would depend on the system and what audit processes are in place for that specific technology.
Oh, I see. So there's no, like, uniform kind of check on, on that, once they have the data that they are asking for?
So the, when there's a cloud, when there's a, so for example, specifically when the cloud is being used, before we can even give any data to a vendor with, using their cloud space as opposed to our cloud space, there's a security check run on that. We have a Chief Information Security Officer within ITB Information Technology Bureau in NYPD, and they check all of that before we even are giving them anything.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'll come back, but I'm gonna switch gears to OTI now. And can you just confirm if all, does NYPD handle all of its technology procurement in-house, or does OTI ever have any input in the technology procurements of NYPD?
Thank you for the question, Chair, and the opportunity to participate in this important conversation today. Again, I'm Mike Fitzpatrick, New York City's Chief Privacy Officer. My office, the Office of Information Privacy, became part of the Office of Technology and Innovation when it was created by Mayoral Executive Order III of 2022, intentionally bringing together the city's technology and technology-related entities under one common ecosystem, and allowing for common touchpoints across subject matter expertise, such as privacy, information security, infrastructure management, et cetera. From a procurement perspective, those are responsibilities that are managed by others at the Office of Technology and Innovation. However, my understanding is that our, our procurement folks negotiate citywide contracts that individual agencies are capable of leveraging for their needs, most notably to drive cost efficiency. But my understanding as well is that our agency does not, is not involved in any direct procurements for the police department. But of course, I'll turn it over to my colleagues to clarify if I've gotten that wrong.
Any response from the agency?
No, Chair, I just, I just wanted to clarify one point from before, which I think, maybe this, maybe there was confusion over this, maybe not, I'm not sure. When we're talking about vendors having access to data, we're not, there's not a situation where someone's coming down and say, hey, can you give us this data? Right? We're talking about in order to operationalize a particular surveillance technology, it involves some third-party vendor, and necessarily, in the nature of using that surveillance technology, the vendor will by definition have access to the data, and therefore, we have to make sure it's secure and not being used improperly. I just wanted to be clear, this is not, we're not talking about a situation where, you know, we're just choosing to give data to a third party. This is all within the context of, all right, we have a surveillance technology, we're operationalizing it, that involves a vendor, and it can come up in various contexts, and then how do we make sure the data is secure? I just wanted that to be clear, that's all.
Okay, thank you. I still have some follow-up questions, but thank you for the clarity. I'm gonna go back to OTI. So I guess the sense that I'm getting is that there is a level of procurement involvement that OTI has, but it sounds like PD, for the most part, has free reins to kind of manage that system independently, regardless if it's technology or surveillance specifically?
So I, I'm not sure that I would characterize it as free rein.
That's the way I understood it. So clarify, please.
So again, as I understand it, and again, I'm happy to bring questions back to the procurement folks who specialize in this, the agency negotiates citywide contracts for services. Again, notably to get the most effective cost for the delivery of those services that individual agencies are capable of leveraging. So think, for example, something as basic as a cell phone plan. Rather than having each individual agency contract for those services and achieve different rates, the Office of Technology and Innovation procurement will negotiate a common rate to get the most effective price for the administration in the city.
Okay. So I guess to that end, in, in procuring technology contracts, PD, are there specific OTI stipulations that you are all subject to around things like cybersecurity and data management practices? How does that look like?
So I'm happy to take this first. So again, as I mentioned, with the consolidation of the city's technology-related entities into the Office of Technology and Innovation, we've, we've brought together the city's subject matter expertise and policy offices as it relates to a number of different verticals, of which mine is information privacy. For, for me, as Chief Privacy Officer in the role of my office, we have the responsibility of setting citywide privacy policies that all agencies follow pursuant to the Identifying Information Law.
PD included?
PD included.
Okay. And is there anything, and this also includes cybersecurity and data management services?
Cybersecurity is the responsibility of our Office of Cyber Command, which provides that particular expertise. But through that consolidation, for example, we've actually been very well positioned to harmonize those policy requirements across, across the city. So for example, the most recent revisions to our citywide privacy policies that occurred earlier this year included such a harmonization by necessarily integrating the city's cybersecurity policies with direct links to them, recognizing the different, the different practice areas often overlap, but allowing for that information to be available to agency employees in one place.
Can you explain how agencies follow this, these policies? Like, what is the checks? How are you all checking in with them to ensure that they, that the agencies are following these policies?
Absolutely. So thank you for that question, Chair. The Identifying Information, which, Identifying Information Law, rather, which is my, my area of concern, naturally integrates a very strong governance regime on a citywide level from agency operations as it relates to identifying information. That law requires every city agency to have a privacy officer designated, and that privacy officer is intentionally so empowered by the law to evaluate and evaluate collections or disclosures of identifying information by their agency through the lens of legal requirement, as well as the agency's overall mission or purpose. Those, oh, sorry.
No, no, no. Does that happen on a, like, a consistent, like, once a year, once a quarter? How often does that need to happen?
So those evaluations on the agency level are occurring as necessary by their privacy officer. If, for example, a new, a new initiative is contemplated by an agency, that would be something that should be, that would involve their privacy officer for consideration. An additional element of the Identifying Information Law is the biennial requirement every two years. Every city agency does a review of its policies and practices as it relates to identifying information. Those reports, we're actually approaching another compliance cycle, which will be due July of next year. Those reports are submitted to the council and kick off another, I think, critically-important element of the Identifying Information Law, which is the review of the city's Citywide Privacy Protection Committee. Of those reports, that committee is defined with particular agencies having a statutory seat at that table, as well as the flexibility of the mayor to add additional agencies as they see fit. That committee, in reviewing those reports on a citywide level, drives towards the development of recommendations to the Chief Privacy Officer on how citywide privacy policy can be revised based upon the observations contained within those reports. Those recommendations are provided to the council. Those recommendations are provided uh, to the council, uh, as well as to me, uh, on, on October of compliance years. And then formally transferring uh, the responsibility to me and my office in, in terms of actioning those recommendations. So it's a very, very important, um, and I think, uh, practice that the identifying information law codified as it relates to that biennial review, recognizing uh, privacy practices must necessarily be considered periodically and involve, evolve over time.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna ask just two more questions, and I have some follow-up, but I definitely want to let my colleagues um, ask a couple, uh, ask their questions. So I just have um, two more before I pass it off. Um, can you share what information was provided to OTI um, from PD related to the post act in this past year?
The, um,
Or detail which projects?
So the, the post act does not include, um, include the Office of Technology and Innovation, I would say. However,
But even in new procurement? So, so, okay, sorry, I'll let you finish, I apologize.
So, um, however, uh, critically important, the identifying information law, to the extent that such technologies uh, involve the collection or disclosure of identifying information, uh, the, the identifying information law still provides a governance regime.
Okay. I guess I'm just trying to grapple. I know that, um, I know that Commissioner Frazier on, on a couple of instances has, has said, um, where funding requests go through OTI, but you're saying not the case with PD and the post act in purchasing of new surveillance equipment or technology equipment?
I can only speak to that uh, from a, from a privacy perspective. Again, there are others within the Office of Technology and Innovation that have, uh, have varying responsibilities, again, through, through procurement.
Mm-hmm.
My understanding is that the Office of Technology and Innovation uh, has, has not done individual procurements for the police department as it relates to surveillance technology, but if there are follow-up questions, I'm happy to bring them back.
And can PD, can PD speak to that?
I'm sorry, to, to, to which question?
With related, with relation to the post act and um, the integration of new technologies and new equipment, is that something that you all, for the purpose of procurement, for example, work with OTI on, or no?
Yeah, our, our chief contracting officer is here. I think he can answer that question.
Wonderful, thank you.
Uh, could you ask the question again?
Sure. Um, so I guess, I, I've asked OTI, I have the response they're gonna get back to me, but I'm curious with relation to the post act and any surveillance or technology um, projects that PD is pursuing. Um, for the purpose of procurement, for example, is there any communication that they make to OTI, for example? Because the way I have understood and the way that Commissioner Frazier has testified in the past is obviously related, anything related under OTI, everything related to technology from any agency sees OTI at, at some point. And so I'm just trying to understand for the purpose of the post act, when that happens?
So it, it would depend on the specific procurement. Um, again, OTI is not overseeing our procurement process.
Totally.
Um, if we're purchasing a type of technology, surveillance technology, that may include like a cloud component, there's certain standard riders that should be included in the contract. Um, if any changes are made to those riders, sometimes we'll be asked to confirm with OTI if they generally agree with.
So it has happened?
Um, yes, it's not a formal approval process, and it's really related to specific elements of the procurement, not like the scope of what we're procuring.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you. I'm gonna pass it off to my colleagues. I believe Councilmember Gavan is first up. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I, I just want to ask some follow-up questions on um, various parts of, of your testimonies throughout the afternoon. I want to start by going back to the IUPs for a moment. How does, how different does a technology have to be to receive its own IUP? And I, I want to give an example here to hone in on, right? Like, you have a different IUP for CCTV cameras and situational cameras, right? Though, they're both cameras, but why doesn't the autonomous robot or the, the, the Times Square robot not, like, why does that not have its own camera?
It's an IUP, you mean?
Its own I, IUP, yes.
So, and I appreciate the question. Um, there is by definition, and I think this is inescapable, there is line drawing that has to be done. There's, there's, I can't, that, that.
How are you drawing them? I want to know what's, what's.
Councilmember, I'm answering your question.
I, I only have limited time though, so I just want you to get straight to the point.
Okay, I'll get right to it. To the extent the nature of the surveillance is fundamentally different, we're gonna do a separate IUP. So for example, drones, a great example, drones, obviously, yes, those have cameras, but the nature of, of, you know, surveillance that's done by drones is fundamentally different than the nature of surveillance that's gonna be done by a situational awareness camera.
So why doesn't the autonomous robot have its own?
Right. So the autonomous robot, um, is, is conduct, is a camera on that robot, and the nature of that surveillance is not different than the nature of the surveillance that is done by any other type of situational awareness camera. The robot is different, but the nature of that recording is not.
But if, I mean, if, if the nature of the, the type of surveillance or recording were not different, then why does, why do we have it? Why, why does it exist? Why, like, if it wasn't substantially different, if it wasn't expanding the capacity or filling a gap in the area, then I would, I would presume there, it would be super, superfluous. It wouldn't be needed.
So, so, n, n, no, there, there are two different things going on. One is the nature of a camera, the other is how a camera's being deployed. So if we have a, um, the, the Night Scope K-5 in the Times Square um, subway station, um, having that camera there, and then the robot sort of moving about, providing sort of a 360 view, um, you know, that may have efficiencies and value, but the, the nature of the camera itself, the nature of the surveillance that is happening is not different.
But you're saying that the, that the, the added value that it has in comparison to other quote-unquote situational cameras to, you're making the determination that it does not, it does not rise to the level of, of needing a, a separate IUP? That I, I, that I, I don't agree with, and I'd be curious to know whether DOI agrees with that. I'm gonna move on. So you, you had mentioned that you do share surveillance technology with other federal agencies, correct?
In the course of criminal investigations.
Just yes or no, like it.
No, I'm answering your question. In the course of criminal investigations, we shared, we share evidence with our law enforcement partners, and that includes evidence gained through the deployment of surveillance technology. Yes.
But my specific question was, like, do you share with agencies like the FBI?
In the course of investigations, yes.
Okay, thank you. And do you share with the Joint Terrorism Task Force, the Homeland Security Investigations Task Force, high-intensity drug trafficking areas? Are those some of the um, departments that you share information with?
In the course of investigations, we definitely share with our law enforcement partners, yes.
And then you testified that you don't share information with ICE, correct?
We do not provide information to ICE, correct?
But do you share any surveillance technology data with other agencies or third parties that then can, may share that data with ICE? So for example, when you share information with the FBI, do you prevent the FBI from sharing that information from ICE? Sharing that information with ICE?
There is absolutely no reason to think that in the course of a criminal investigation into a particular criminal organization or individual, that, that FBI would be giving that information to ICE.
That wasn't my question. My question was, when you share information with the FBI, do you prevent them from sharing that information with ICE?
That information is to be used for the investigation at issue. It is not, as with any of the investigations, they are investigation-specific.
You're, I, I.
I, I am answering your question, which is that we provide it for that investigation.
Yes, and when you provide it to the FBI, yes or no? Do you do anything? Are there any mechanisms in place to prevent them from sharing that information with ICE?
To the extent there's a task force, and there's an MOU for the task force, that MOU may or may not govern how information is being used by, in the course of task force investigations. That is going to depend on the particular task force and the nature of the MOU that exists for that task force.
So if there is information that you give to that partic, and may I have a few more minutes, please? If there's information that you give to a task force or an agency in the MOU, is it your standard practice to set a, a, set an agreement that that information will, will not then be passed off to ICE?
The information that we share through the course of, the, for the task force is only to be used for task force investigations only.
And so how do you enforce that?
That's an operational enforcement because the members of the task force, whether um, federal or NYPD, are still required to follow their own confidentiality rules within their agency.
Okay, but the rules within that agency might be different than the rules within, uh, this agency that, that is, that exists in a sanctuary city, correct?
But to the extent that they sign on to the MOU that requires them to only use it, use the information that they gain for task force investigations, that's, that's the security measure.
Okay. I'm, I'm gonna move on. I have two more questions. I just, I want to be respectful of my colleagues' time, and thank you for indulging me, Chairs. But the, the first is about um, ClearView AI facial recognition, right? I, I, when you, when you were using that, who controlled the data? Why, why were officers using ClearView AI without any policy in place about how that data was maintained and who had um, access to it? And then I just have one final question after that.
Okay. The department's policy is very clear. When using facial recognition, the photo repository that is used is arrest photos and parole photos. Absent authorization from either the chief of detectives or the deputy commissioner of intelligence and counterterrorism, officers aren't, detectives are not permitted to conduct facial recognition outside of the, the universe I just described. So whether it's ClearView or anything else, you cannot go outside that photo repository of arrest and parole photos, absent authorization from one of the individuals I just mentioned. To the extent you don't have that authorization, you absolutely cannot conduct facial recognition using ClearView or any other facial recognition system.
Thank, thank you. Hopefully one of my colleagues follows up on, on that. Um, my final question is just, that you were part of, along with other agencies, an agreement. So the NYPD and the DOI, the Comptroller, the mayor's office of contract services, the mayor's office of management and budget, and the law department, you all had an agreement to hide special expenses, bu, budget contracts, which includes a lot of your surveillance contracts, and then Comptroller Springer withdrew from that agreement after the post act passed. Are the agencies still abiding by that agreement to keep this info from the public? Is, like, is everybody still a part of that agreement? Is there a new agreement? That's my last question.
Councilmember, I do not accept the premise of your question, and we are, we are abiding.
We have to move on to the next um, council member to um, ask a question. I want to recognize Councilmember Brewer, and we're gonna move on to Councilmember Joseph.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I wanted some, um, to talk about DigiDogs. So I wanted to find out, how many DigiDogs did the NYPD purchase?
Yeah.
Does the NYPD plan to purchase more DigiDogs?
Yes. Thank you for your question, Councilmember. How are you?
I'm good.
Good. We've purchased two DigiDogs. At this time, we don't have any plans to purchase anymore.
According to Politico, two DigiDogs cost about 750,000. Does this contract include maintenance, annual software update, patching mechan, mechan, mechanism, or other upkeep procedures? Maintenance, are you gonna maintain it?
Yeah. The, the price that you quoted is accurate. Um, the full details of the contract I do not have, I can get.
You're gonna get that information for me, because for 750,000, I hope somebody's taking care of that dog, updating the software, making sure it lasts. How often do have these DigiDogs have been used since their purchase?
Uh, we've deployed them five times since we've purchased them.
And what was the reason for the deployment?
Uh, they were deployed for situations where people were armed, armed with firearms, barricaded in homes.
Was it helpful?
Um, yes, it is helpful. It is helpful. Um, as the chief of department, my main concern is making sure that not only do I keep my officers safe, that I keep the public safe. DigiDog is a tool that helps us to go into a situation where a person may be armed, and hopefully we have the opportunity to see what the person ha, if they do possess a weapon, alright? Instead of sending in my officers in there first, I could send a robot in there, and, you know, I don't want anything to happen to the robot, but if it does, you know, it is what it is. We have to make sure our officers are safe, and we also have to make sure the people we're trying to help are safe. Earlier this year, when we had um, the parking garage that, that collapsed over here, it was through the use of DigiDog, we were able to find unfortunately someone who was in there buried. But DigiDog was able to go in there when police officers or firefighters could not go in there.
Okay, thank you. Um, after introducing the DigiDog and the K-5, the mayor said that this is the beginning of a series of rollouts. Um, are we going, we're going to do, so the public safety, in the statement it said, the public safety has transformed itself. What other technologies are in the pipeline for NYPD?
Well, I think right now, we're, we're looking at different technologies. The biggest thing that we've been using with a lot of success are the, are the, the drones,
Mm-hmm.
the unmanned aerials, um, systems. Um, that's what we're really using. We're really trying to learn that technology better, expand that technology. I have many, many uh, uh, events that I could discuss where using the drones were extremely helpful. It helped public safety, it helped police officer safety. So our drone technology is one of the, probably the biggest thing that we're looking to expand on right now. There's other things that are, you know, we're being looked at. We're always looking at new technology when it's delivered to us, but nothing uh, that we're really ready to move on to, shit.
Are you looking into AI as part of your technology and?
AI is already out there. It exists.
It's out there. Are you training your officers to use AI for weapon detection?
We don't use AI in the department.
And just, just to be clear about that, you know, um, it really depends what your question is, in terms of like some freestanding AI training, we don't do that. There are certain technologies we have where the, the sort of, the background to the technology is.
Is AI.
Is, is AI machine learning-based.
Correct.
Um, we have a few things like that, um, uh, but, um, but we don't have sort of a, there's no, I'm not aware of some like freestanding AI initiative, if that makes sense. Uh, but, but to your point, there are a few surveillance technologies we have where the sort of, there's sort of machine learning that, that allows the technology to function, and that does fall within the scope of AI.
And, and some of it also AI where you can detect the weapon if somebody pulls out a weapon in the, in the surveillance part?
We, we do not, you do that. We do not have that.
You don't have that.
We, we certainly don't use it. We certainly not have the, that is not a technology that we have deployed.
And how often are your officers trained on this new technology once it's, it comes into use?
It's a rigorous process. When we have, when we obtain new technology, it doesn't go to the masses within the department. It's usually, uh, within our, our technical, technical assistance or response unit, commonly known as TARU. We usually, our TARU officers were trained in our technology, the various forms of technology. We u, we usually, usually allow them to use it first through a pilot phase, a test phase, and then if it's something that works, then we'll expand it.
And that's the train, and it's been helpful, the way you're training your small units?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Holden?
Thank you, Chairs. Um, a question on, um, I guess for Deputy Commissioner Gerber, regarding the facial recognition software, the improvements we've seen over the past few years. Because I, I, I hear a lot of, you know, comments that it's not accurate, but it has improved immensely from my research over the years. Can you, can you talk to that?
Yeah, no, I think that's exactly right. Um, I think what you've seen over the past few years, and there's been, you know, academic work on this, scholarly work on this, um, that really over the past few years, the, the accuracy of the facial recognition software, you know, has, has improved significantly. And, you know, so, so, you know, we, we use uh, software that has uh, algorithms that, that have been reviewed by uh, NIST, NIST, National Institute of Standards and Technology. And to your point, um, the, the technology, its accuracy has improved very significantly, I'd say, over the past, you know, half decade.
Do you, where the, uh, could you speak to the accuracy, though? Like, what percentage uh, is, like, that comes up as an error in, in certain software? Do, do you, do you have those figures?
That, that I do not have here.
Okay. Because there's a lot of, even businesses that have invested in that to protect their property and to protect their businesses. And, and it seems that, you know, when, when I was speaking to some of the business groups, they were saying that would actually disable many of the, the stores from even, or at least prevent them from operating normally.
Well, one thing I do want to emphasize, um, is that when we talk about using facial recognition technology, we are talking about having multiple individuals reviewing that output, and reviewing the possibility of a potential match before anything is provided to a detective.
So there's quite a debate on that. They, they talk amongst themselves, is this the same guy? Is that, that kind of thing, or?
Right, so, so you'll have an initial, if, if a, if a case detective requests the facial, you know, a, a case detective submits an image for facial recognition uh, use. That image may or may not be usable for facial recognition. It's really gonna depend. So sometimes, you know, a, a, a photo is provided, but it's rejected. We just, we can't use it. Uh, if, if it is usable, um, you'll have uh, an initial uh,
you'll have an initial detective who does this work, who, who reviews the output. If that detective identifies a potential match, if that happens, a second detective will also review to see if he or she agrees on the potential match, and then a supervisor will also review. And only if there is complete agreement between the first detective, the second detective, and the supervisor, will that be flagged for the case detective as a potential match. So we, we have a lot of, I think it's very important that, yes, there is, of course, this important technology that we're using, but there also is, there are substantial human checks in this process, multiple human checks. And just to emphasize, even when there's a potential match, it's just a lead. That's all it is. It is not basis for probable cause.
It's a tool, and, and, but it does catch a lot of the bad guys, I would say.
Exactly.
If you look at, we have a photo of the individual who attacked the woman, let's say, on the subway. Once we get that, many times, that person is arrested. So it is working, and to eliminate that tool would be a problem, especially with a smaller police force and less detail. I have half the amount of detectives in my precinct that I used to have just a few years ago. And so I, I can see it. If we're not using technology in the right way, obviously, if we're not, if we're prohibited from using it, period, certain technology, that's gonna hurt us with public safety. I guess the chief can speak to that.
You're absolutely right, council member. We don't want to lose this technology. And as the commissioner said, the facial identification just provides a lead. It, from there, our detectives have to go out and do some good old fashioned detective work, knock on doors, use other technology to verify if that match, if the person who they believe it is, is that person, and if that person was even in a position to do that crime. So it's just a lead, but it's a very helpful lead, something that this department relies on, and it helps us solve crime.
Right. And that, that's, that's why the police force exists, and first of all, at public safety. Let me just ask one, one other question. Deputy Commissioner Gerber, you said you don't share information with ICE at all?
We, we are not permitted to do, to, to do anything, basically, in the world of civil immigration enforcement. We're not allowed to do that.
No, but what, let's say there, there are 2 million people now on the terror watch list. Do you know that? There's 2 million people. This is the latest news that we have. 2 million. So if, let's say your facial recognition comes up with somebody and it, it pings on the, the fact that this, this guy is on the terror watch list. Is it, do you have, do you just go to the FBI, or you won't?
So, so obviously, if-
You go to ICE?
As a matter of a criminal investigation, we go to, we have, we have various law and partners, law enforcement partners. But whatever else we're doing in the criminal realm, we, we are not permitted to use department resources, department information in connection with civil immigration enforcement. We're not allowed.
No, but I'm talking about criminal. If-
Right.
If somebody comes in, and, and he appears on the terror watch list, and you hit, you have a match, you notify ICE then?
We, we're gonna notify law enforcement partners-
Right.
In connection with potentially a criminal investigation, obviously.
Because I lived, and most of us have lived through 9/11. We know why customer enforcement was created, so that we can communicate with agencies. So not to, to communicate with somebody who's, who's ma- who matches the terror watch list would be ridiculous.
Just, just to be clear, the, the terror watch list is, is not part of our facial recognition repository. I, I think it's important, just, just to the record's crystal clear, right? Our facial recognition, our facial recognition system, again, is off of arrest photos and parole photos. It does not include photos off of the terror watch list. That's totally separate. And again, absent-
I would say why not, but I just, you know, that's me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Council member Stevens?
Hi, good afternoon. I just wanted to just make sure and have a couple of points, because when we talk about terror watch lists and things like that, we, we have to be careful about that. Nelson Mandela was on a terrorist watch list for a number of years, and we, he was a great man, and so obviously, those things come with biases. And because humans are always in charge, they also come with biases. So it should be a tool, but we also need to recognize the racial implications that those come with. And so I think we need to be, make sure that that needs to also be said. And also, just, also just talking about technology, and I think that we should be moving in a direction of technology, and the police department should be using those things. But again, because of the relationship that they have with certain communities, especially the black, brown, Latino, and Muslims, this is why it is becoming an issue, because the mistrust is there, and it hasn't been built. And so when we have these things coming up, these issues, we're going to be suspicious of it because we are not doing the work of actually building these relationships and trust in all communities. So I do think it's a lot easier for other folks to lean into some of these things in an easier way, because they're not discriminated against continuously. But my question is, the Office of Inspector General released a report on criminal group database that stated that 99% of the individuals found on the database were black or Latino. How do you explain the huge racial disparities found in these surveillance databases?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll start and then turn it over to the chief. I, I, I do think it's important, in, in responding to your question, part of the response, I think it is important to emphasize, that that report, which was, which was, you know, exhaustive, found no evidence that inclusion in the criminal group database caused harm to any individual or group of individuals.
That's you making that assumption? The people that's on the list might speak otherwise, but continue.
I'm, I'm just quoting from the report.
I know, but I'm just saying.
It's DOI's report.
Mm-hmm.
And they did not find any evidence of, of a relationship between inclusion in the database and any individual adverse outcomes. Again, that's the DOI reports, not me. I, I do think that's important to say on the record.
And even quoting that means if it's, doesn't do anything, then why do we have it?
No, no, so, so-
I'm just, because you quoted the report, right?
Yes.
So if we're gonna quote the report, and from the report that you just quoted, to try to say that it's not being used, then why do we have it then?
No, no, no. It, it is, it is used as an investigative tool. I, I just think it's important to emphasize that that information is not being provided, for example, to, it's, it's not part of one's criminal history. It's not provided to potential employers. It's not provided in connection with housing. I just-
So then why is 99% of it black and Latino?
Council member, I think, when we just, when we just look at what's going on in our communities, when you look at a lot of the gang and the crew activities, a lot of-
They're not just black and brown?
A, a lot of it is based in a lot of our communities in Brownsville.
I'm disappointed that you, as a black man, would even say that. Every racial group has gangs.
You're taking it the wrong way. We're talking about just the sheer numbers. I'm not saying that it doesn't exist in other neighborhoods, but I'm just saying, in our particular neighborhoods, we do see a, a number of gangs and crews. This is an internal intelligence piece. As the commissioner said, we don't share it with people. It's all internal information. There's a series of steps that we go through before we need, before we put in anybody on there, and there's a series of steps that we go through.
So then what are the tools that you're using to surveillance people who are not black and brown? Because if you're gonna say that in these communities, there are high numbers of gangs, that means that, okay, great. And we know that there are other communities that have gangs and do criminal activities. Where is their database? Where is their, their use for, you know, investigations? Where is that information being kept? Because if it's one specific group, it seems like they're being targeted.
Well, we have an intelligence division that keeps different, different information on different groups. I mean, there's information on, uh, you know, all kinds of criminal groups.
Could you, could you give us information about where those other databases is on these other groups? Because maybe that will probably help with some of it. But when we have a database that is 99% black and Latino, that's a concern and a red flag for me. And if it's not for everyone sitting up here, that's a problem for me. Because that means that you're watching a certain group of people while others aren't getting the same level of scrutiny. And even when we talk about the criteria to get on there, it's very subjective.
The, the, with, the way you get on there, it's not subjective. A lot of it has to do with self-admission. A lot of it has to do with self-admission. And a lot of young people that we bring in, they do self-admit, yes, I'm a part of this. They don't hide it.
So, all right.
But, but, just to go back to-
You know I know the criteria.
No, just to go back to your point, like, listen, we have organized crime groups. There's, we have database and information on organized crime, people who are in there, and they don't look like people from our communities. Some do, some don't. We have different databases. I understand that the, the crew, gang crew database has been a very, a, a subject, a subject that's, you know, resonated poorly throughout our communities, because, yes, there have been young people who've been put on there, and we've gone through steps to remove them, and as well as-
Well, part of the problem is some young people don't even know that they're on the database. So, listen, you know, this is one of the areas I actually know a lot about. And so, like, let's not pretend like you don't know that you're on there. There's a, it's, it's a secret. You don't know how to get off of there. The steps to foil to do it is very difficult and arduous. But what I'm saying is that I'm gonna wrap up, because I know there's other people, and you guys are on a time limit. It is a problem that 99, I'm gonna say this again, 99% of those folks on there are black and brown, which is why, every reason why they're pushing back on any new technology and surveillance, because this is another reason why people don't trust the work that is being done. This is a reason, and I'm telling you. Like, we don't feel safe, because why would you have a database that is literally racial profiling? But this is, I'm telling you, we gotta get to a place where everyone feels safe, and everyone feels like they're being included. And that's just not the case, and this is an example of that. So thank you.
Thank you. Council member Stevens. Council member Palladino?
Good afternoon. I have a couple of simple questions. Given the NYPD's opposition to the Post Act, can the department elaborate on the challenges it faces in balancing transparency with the need to protect sensitive operational details from potential criminal exploitation?
I'll take that. I, you know, this is, uh, relates to a question that Chair Hanks asked earlier. When, when we are do, when we did the IUPs initially, and then when, when we do the addendums to the IUP, again, we have to follow the law. We have to make sure we're making the requisite disclosures consistent with the act. We, we do have to be careful not to compromise public safety, and we would not want to, for example, put our undercovers at risk. We would not want to, um, to take steps that, that, that would hurt a public safety efforts. I think, you know, the, the way we've, the way the Post Act is, is working, I think we, we've been, we've, we, consistent with the law, have been able to strike that balance. Again, I, I do have real concerns that Intro 1207 shifts that balance, or at least risks shifting that balance in a way that will compromise public safety efforts.
Because the NYPD was against the Post Act back in 2020.
We were.
Right. Okay. Uh, I, one of the other questions I had was, can you elaborate on how disclosure of surveillance capabilities as required by the Post Act could specifically endanger your undercover officers and compromise their safety?
Yeah, this goes to the hardware point, right? So, so we have an IUP for each type of surveillance technology. We don't break it down by each type of hardware, and that plays out in a lot of different ways. And if we had to do it, you know, hardware by hardware, that would have, there'd be a lot of problems with that. Some of them, administrability, some of them, I think, actually confusion for the public. But it also goes to this point about, about undercovers. It is one thing to say publicly, we, you know, have under, we have covert recording devices, covert video recording devices, covert audio recording devices. It's one thing to explain that at a certain level of generality, to explain the rules, laws, procedures that govern those investigative tools. It would be something else entirely if we had to do a new IUP for each type of hardware in which a surveillance technology is deployed. That, that would be, for our undercovers, very dangerous.
Okay, one, how does the NYPD assess- Got it. I got it. I'm on, okay. How does the NYPD assess the impact of Post Act, of the Post Act on its counterterrorism efforts? Are the concerns of that act, and could they inadvertently aid terrorist organizations by revealing these surveillance tactics?
So I, I think, in terms of where we are now, you know, I think, I do not think that, that the, the Post Act has, has compromised those efforts. I, I would be concerned about changes to the language of the Post Act that would require, again, IUPs on a hardware-by-hardware basis, or in a more granular way, I think raises the types of concerns that you're identifying.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, council member Palladino Abreu. Council member Abreu?
Thank you, chairs. I have a question on the DigiDogs. Where do they live?
Where do they live?
Yeah, where do the DigiDogs live?
Uh, they're at our TARU base.
Okay, where's that?
Uh, in Queens.
In Queens.
By the White Stone Bridge.
I have a question in regards to the police-involved shooting earlier this week. Were DigiDogs deployed there?
We had DigiDog at the scene. DigiDog was-
Sorry, one question, one second. I won't be able to see you. Go ahead.
DigiDog was there. DigiDog was actually in the process of being deployed, but we used the Avatar first, and then that's, that's what things, uh, you know, it got, became chaotic, and that's when the gunfire started.
Got it. So DigiDog was not used at that?
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't, we was, we deployed some other forms of technology first. We had DigiDog there. We were ready to deploy it, but that's, then the gunfire started before we got a chance to use DigiDog.
And is it because DigiDog was maybe too far away, or just the timing of it didn't work out? Because I do know, you mentioned in your testimony earlier, that DigiDogs would be deployed in situations where people are armed. I want to make sure that we're, of course, maximizing the use of DigiDog.
Absolutely, but we do have other forms of, of technology that can also do the same thing that DigiDog can do. We sent a scout in first. A scout's like a small ball. It goes in there, has a camera. The person in there was able to immobilize the scout by throwing, throwing an, throwing something on it. We actually used a drone first, a small drone. The person took a broom and swatted the drone down.
That's right.
Destroyed the drone. Then we sent the Avatar in, which is basically a camera that's on wheels. It's like a camera, it's a set of wheels, the camera, it's a pole camera. We sent that in. An emergency service kinda walked in behind it, because they were trying to close the distance between themselves and the suspect. That's when the suspect emerged from the bathroom door and started firing.
Thanks for that, chief. You also mentioned earlier in your testimony that there were five situations where DigiDog has been deployed. One of them was the garage collapse. Can you, to the extent you have this, can you speak to the other four situations that they were used for?
Um, I can't speak to all of them. I could speak to two that are, that are, um, that I, that I was a little bit more, you know, I was at the scene of. One was, um, about a month ago, we had a situation in, over in Astoria, where a resident of a building shot his super, and then he ran inside and barricaded himself inside. We were able to use DigiDog. And the reason we were able to use it, DigiDog has the ability to walk upstairs. So we used DigiDog at that, um, location. And then we had another situation where there was a person, there was a emotionally disturbed person who was, we couldn't locate him in a building, so we used DigiDog to walk up and down the building. We found him on the roof.
And, so it seems it was helpful for-
Absolutely. We were able to use DigiDog. We found him on the roof. We were able to bring him, bring him, you know, put him in custody with no problem. So definitely helpful. The other situation, we had DigiDog, and DigiDog went up there. DigiDog was able to go up there, do some surveillance for us, but eventually, emergency service had to move in a little closer. When we moved in a little closer, the, the suspect shot himself.
Thank you. And to have one minute, I just want to quickly pivot to, to drones. I'm, hopefully, my colleagues can ask further questions on drones. Who makes the decisions about how drones can be deployed, and where is drone-recorded data stored?
The decision comes from me. One of my designees is usually the chief of patrol, my chief of staff, or the chief of special operations. What we do with the drone, we just, basically, right now, we're still developing the whole process, but we just take some notes of when we deployed the drones, if they was useful for what we needed it for. And that's what we're doing right now. Of course, we're gonna improve that.
And what's the drone, what are drones primarily used for?
It's used, really, for large-scale events. We've used them with success at large-scale events. Electric Zoo, that happened late in the summer, where about 1,000 people crashed the gates, because there was discrepancy with the, with the tickets. We were making a decision to close the place down, because we thought it was overcrowded. We were able to put the drone up. We were able to get an aerial view- We were able to get an aerial view of the park, and we realized that the place wasn't overcrowded, so we didn't have to create a situation now where we're telling thousands of people, the event's over. We knew it was safe in there, and we, uh, allowed the event to continue. Um, in Union Square, over the summer, when a bunch of young people converged down there, um, you know, believing that they were going to receive some gifts, I was there personally on the scene, and I could engage how many kids were out there. Once we put the drone up there, we realized we had up to 5,000 or 6,000 young people out there, where from my vantage point, it maybe looked like 1,000 or 1,500. So, again, very helpful. We realized we had more young people out there than, uh, you know, we could handle at that moment. We had to bring additional resources there, and we had to figure out how to get them out, which we were able to do.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Brewer?
Thank you. Some of my questions, because I was late, I had another event, might be for the next session, but I'm always interested in the contracts, and so, obviously, whether it's drones, it's cybersecurity. I just want to know, do you handle this in-house? Do you have, how many contracts do you have? How do you work with Commissioner Frazier, et cetera? How, how do you put together this procurement for technology?
Uh, thank you for the question, Councilmember. I'm Mike Fitzpatrick, New York City's Chief Privacy Officer, and my office, the Office of Information Privacy, is part of OTI. I know you came in late, I just wanted to...
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Um, so, from, from a contracting perspective, um, in my role as the Chief Privacy Officer, I have the responsibility of providing agencies with standardized terms to support data protection pursuant to our local identifying information law. Those terms are part of citywide privacy policy, um, and our agency privacy officers look to those terms to support their agency negotiation of contracts. Our policies provide that, most notably, I think, that when sensitive identifying information is at issue, that is, information that carries an increased risk of harm to a particular individual, that is a must-attach situation for a very specific set of, of terms. And, again, notably, earlier this year, pursuant to our latest revision to citywide privacy policy, we included an additional requirement that those, that contracting language cannot be changed without the express authorization of the Chief Privacy Officer to add an additional control and support further data protection and privacy protection at the agency level. So, I'll, I'll answer that from the, the policy perspective, and I'll turn it over to my colleagues to speak to the department's practices.
That's helpful.
Um, so, yeah, I can speak to that. So, we obviously have internal process review for any type of contracts that we purchase. Obviously, the value of the contract, the type of procurement that we're doing, the type of surveillance technology we might be procuring, we'll have different types of steps of review to make sure that the appropriate clauses and, uh, terms are included in the agreement. In addition to that, there's obviously multiple levels of oversight review when we put together a contract after internal review by our legal teams. It also goes to the New York City Law Department, who also does an additional layer of review. I mentioned before that, you know, occasionally, we're asked if, you know, if we've made changes to some of the agreements that are provided by OTI, if OTI has concurred with any changes that we've made. That usually happens through the law department review process. So, again, multiple layers internally, as well as oversight review, so that all appropriate parties are informed of whatever type of contract, and if there's any privacy concerns, that they're addressed.
And it sounds like it hasn't breached at all, in the sense that you keep the information and that this contracting process is working in terms of information not getting to the private hands where it should not be. Sounds right?
To my knowledge, yes.
Okay. Do we have some sense, because a lot of this has to be contracted out, obviously, do we have some sense generally for NYPD, how many contracts are let for technology, surveillance, et cetera? I mean, I know it's a very broad question, I know that, but do you have some sense and what the dollar figure is?
Um, I think, I think we do have some dollar figures that, um, we, we can provide, and I'll double-check to make sure we have them. We do about anywhere from 2,500 to 3,000 individual purchases, right? Those can be small contracts, those can be large contracts.
Per year, what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, so, so, again, you know, I don't have an exact figure for you, and how many of those things relate to surveillance technology. I, I, I think we have some rough numbers, um, of spending, um, regarding surveillance technology. I think it's in the realm of $120 million per year for surveillance technology that's covered under the POST Act.
Okay. The reason I also ask is, um, I know a bit about technology in my past, and it's always concerning to me that when you contract out, which has to happen, then you don't have the intellectual property internally. And when that company contract ends, sometimes so does the information. Is that something that you're aware of and deal with, or that's not an issue?
I, I don't think so. I mean, I believe our agreements contain very specific language that NEIP created through those contracts, is retained by the City of New York, so I, I believe they would be in breach of contract if they took any information from that engagement and then used it elsewhere.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am Chair.
Thank you so much. I just have a few questions, and I thank all my colleagues for those great questions, and kind of, um, expanding on the questions from Councilmember Stevens. When it comes to the technology, and there are a lot of things have been written about coded bias, are there any potential, well, we know this, but for racial biases in the underlying technologies of certain surveillance utilized by NYPD? And if so, does the department mitigate that bias when using the technology?
So, I'll, I'll, I'll start with that. I think, I think, you know, one concern, for example, that's been raised over the years is that sort of bias in the facial recognition space. I do think, I do think that those concerns are, are much, or less now than they were, say, five or 10 years ago. I do think the technology has gotten better, and that, that risk of bias inherent in the technology has diminished. I, I also think that the, the crucial point, again, is that we're not just blindly, you know, following some output from some facial recognition algorithm. That is the starting point of a process that then goes to multiple points of human review, a first detective, a second detective, and a supervisor, and then only if all those three are in concurrence, only then does it get passed along as a lead to, to the case detective. So, I, I do think that that's an example of a situation in which the, the human element on top of the technology, uh, you know, should have a mitigating effect in terms of the issue that you're raising.
Thank you so much. So, do you have any internal audits on, on this use of technology when it comes to, um, the surveillance audits? I think you started by saying you have, you know, a detective, you have a process, but then, you know, things are changing rapidly. Is there a space where there is an audit process, where it's quarterly, yearly, um, you know, there is a human component to this? So, what I think the question is, is surrounding on, is there a compliance and audit as time goes on to make sure, recalibrate, I guess the word is, to make sure that the technology, that even the officers who are looking at this are in the right and correct headspace?
Right. So, so with regard to any surveillance technology, there's always, you know, sometimes audits can be ordered in a variety of contexts for a variety of reasons. I think the question that you're asking is about, is there some regular audit that is done in terms of the facial recognition procedures? I'm actually not sure about that. I, I'm not aware of that, but it's, it's possible that it exists, I just don't know about it. But I, I'm, I'm not aware of that.
And finally, before I pass it along to my chair, and I also, and I just want to thank you all for your, your testimony and answering our questions to the best of your ability. We had a, a, in Staten Island's North Shore, we had a summer stage concert, and I noticed that there were drones being used. It was probably one of the first events in my district where it was 5,000-plus. It was, we considered it an incredible, um, event. Is there a mechanism in which we're told that drone, if we, if we have an event, especially as a council member, people who are, you know, we're funding these events, these are events, I mean, it's our names on the flyers, and we're, and the outreach, is there any way, or is there any mechanism in which you are letting us know as, as council members or as, as, as event organizers? Because to your point, they, they were very helpful to you. I just wished you took better pictures, but... But, um, you know, we, we just wanted to kind of get an idea that, I didn't know that it was being used, and I, and I thought it was, um, media. I thought it was, uh, you know, a newspaper. How do we know which drone is being used for what, for what purpose and what agency?
Um, we can definitely build that mechanism in. I don't, I don't believe we have one right now, but that's something that, that's a very easy fix. We do want you to have that clarity where you know if it's us, the NYPD, using, using a drone versus a media company using a drone. So, that's something that we can definitely build a mechanism for to make sure, you know, the members of the council are aware, are aware if we're going to use drone technology in, in your district.
Thank you so much. Um, I did want to have, I had some questions on, like, social media analysis tools and, like, ShotSpotter. According to the NYPD's report, the ShotSpotter system records one second before and one second after a gunshot. However, there are several reports from advocates that demonstrate that the system's recordings often extend beyond this second, this one-second window. Can you confirm that the audio recording received by NYPD is only limited to one second before or after a gunshot? And can you determine the difference between that and 4th of July fireworks? Do it in my neighborhood.
So, um, to answer your question, um, when there's a ShotSpotter hit, so to speak, a ShotSpotter is triggered, um, the, the audio clip that the NYPD gets has like one second before, one second after. We're, we're not given some larger audio universe, period. The ShotSpotter system, there, there is recording that the ShotSpotter system has that goes on for some number of hours, but we don't have access to that. We don't have access to it in real time, we don't have access to it historically...
Who does have access to it?
So, I mean, ShotSpotter has it. And I, I also do want to just emphasize, when I say, you know, there's, the, the microphones are on, but they're 30 feet above ground, they're, they're not, they're not designed to pick up, you know, human conversation, all that. But to the extent there's any confusion about this, I think the confusion is between what is being recorded by, by ShotSpotter and then what the NYPD ever has access to. And what we're talking about is gunshot, one second before, one second after.
Thank you so much. That concludes my questioning for NYPD. My Chair, Gutierrez?
Thanks, Chair. Can I, I just want to finish up the conversation around Digidog. I know that the mayor has stated multiple times that, you know, the rollout of this device is, is kind of the beginning, right? There's, there's more. Can you all share if there are any other technologies similar or, or with the ability to kind of operate in the same way as Digidog? Anything that PD has in the pipeline?
Um, not that I'm aware of. I mean, we have IT department, uh, they have numerous people at work there that are looking at different technology, but nothing has, nothing that's been introduced to me yet for a potential rollout.
And I know, Chief, thank you, I know you mentioned that you could speak to a handful of instances where Digidog rolled out. Um, I'm sure you know, in the previous administration, when something similar was rolled out, there was, um, a lot of opposition, particularly in communities in central Brooklyn, East New York, that really felt like they would be targeted. How do you feel that, that you are rolling this device out differently, and how have you integrated that feedback into your decision-making?
Well, believe it or not, I have requests from community groups, young people. I have actually one sitting on my desk right now in the Bronx. They have a robotics program. They asked if we could bring the Digidog up there. We're going to bring it up there to show it to a group of kids in the Bronx at the Renaissance. Yeah, wherever, yeah, uh, well...
She's going to take that up with you.
I'm going to make sure she's there.
Thanks a lot, Dave.
But again, you know, um, I have a, I have an ask, and we're going to bring it up there. This is what we need to do. We need to bring Digidog out, and we do bring Digidog out, and we let people see exactly how it operates. And I think once people see it, it, it kind of, you know, it kind of, it kind of brings them down, and they understand exactly what it is. There's no weapons attached to it. It's, it's, you know, it's a robotic dog, and it can move and operate like, like a dog. It can do certain things that other, um, robotics we have can't do.
Yeah.
And again, it's, it's, it's a tool to save lives. It's a tool to save people more than anything else.
And understood. Um, and that, that example of the school is more like a show and tell, and kind of like exposure, correct?
Yes.
Um, but in instances where communities, for example, like in East New York, I remember they were in opposition to, to the, the previous administration's rollout, what can you say about how you all, how you will prioritize or the decision-making process behind, like, where Digidog goes? Is there anything that you can share specifically for advocates that are concerned about, like, racial profiling?
Digidog, again, when Digidog is deployed, it's usually, you know, under my orders, one of my designees. We're using Digidog for very volatile situations, situations where people are armed, situ where, situations where people may need to be rescued. It's not just being used randomly in neighborhoods to walk around. You will not see Digidog doing that. If you see it walking around a neighborhood, it's going to be for demonstrate, you know, demonstrative purpose. I'll probably be there talking to people in the community, letting them know this is what it's about, but you won't see that. It's used for, for purposes where there's danger, where someone's safety is in jeopardy. That's what we're using Digidog for.
Thank you. Um, that'll wrap up my Digidog questions. Um, I want to move on to...
I should have brought them here.
I want to say no, but I'm tempted to be like, yes, you should have.
Get me out of it.
Um, what is, so I want to just switch gears, um, outside of, of the POST Act. Really curious about policing software and predictive policing software. Do you know, does NYPD use any predictive policing software?
No. The, 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 the PD does not have, uh, a mechanism for predicting future crime, um...
So, no databases?
We, we certainly analyze historical data. Humans analyze data. We sometimes use technology to analyze historical data. But in terms of, like, predicting the future, predicting, predicting future crime, we don't, we don't have the capability, no.
But we'll somewhat argue that a, a database in, in many ways provides, does do that.
Well, no, just for, for example, if, if we have a, a crime that's been committed, and we're trying to figure out if that links up with some other, other past crimes, so crime has been committed in the past, is that part of some pattern? Where, of course, of course, we're going to look at historical data to see if it's part of a pattern. It would be irresponsible not to. And so, we're going to look, and when you say database, we're looking, we're talking about historical, you know, crime reports, for example, that, you know, historical data regarding locations of crime, or the MO that was used in a particular crime. In those situations, we're going to look at that historical data to try to solve crimes that have been committed. But that's, that is very different, categorically different than some sort of predictive policing.
Thank you. I know that some members had asked about facial recognition. Is there anything that you can speak to regarding voice recognition? I, I've read a number of, um, examples where potentially, like, cell phone equipment can be utilized to capture, um, information from folks. I think it might even be on one of the devices that you're utilizing, but is voice recognition a feature of any of the surveillance tools that you use?
Um, I'm, I'm not necessarily sure exactly what you're referring to, but I, I believe the answer is no. We don't, I, I'm, again, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure I know what you're referring to, but, again, I'm, if I understand you correctly, the answer is no.
But, so, I think plainly, are there any devices or surveillance tools that the PD has that are for the intent, like, the intent of capturing voices or conversations?
Oh, well, sure. I mean, we, we, I mean, sorry, the, we, of course, in undercover operations, we'll, we'll sometimes record conversations, right? So, undercover recording devices, which have come up a number of times. We also, I mean, as you know, we have court-authorized wiretaps, for example, and there's a rigorous legal process for that. It requires a court authorization, and frankly, authorization and a showing that goes beyond probable cause for, for court-authorized wiretaps. So, um, there are scenarios where we are recording what people say, consistent with the law. And obviously, there are very strict rules about when we're allowed to do that and how we can do that, and the necessary court authorizations for doing that. But I, I thought you were asking about sort of, uh, voice recognition, where I think it was a little different, and that's, that's what I was a little confused by.
But I think you answered it. I think it sounds like, no. I want to just kind of jump back on, uh, jump a little bit related to...
Chair, if I may just, for one moment, just, I want to clarify one thing. There is, because the voice recognition issue where it does come up, something we are not using, uh, yet, um, there have been public reports about Truleo, um, and that, so, so, there's been public reporting about this. We're considering what, if anything, to do with Truleo. There is a contract, but, um, if we decide to go ahead with a Truleo pilot and using Truleo, um, that is a... Truleo, um, that is a, it, it basically uses AI, it's, it's voice analytics, it's voice analytics. Part of voice analytics, I'm not an expert on this, but as we're talking about it, voice analytics is gonna include, obviously, the ability to recognize, distinguish between voices. Um, but I just want to be very, very clear, we are not doing that now. And if we were to, um, start using voice analytics, uh, which maybe, maybe is what your question is getting at, uh, we would have to do a new IUP. That would be, that would be a new surveillance technology for us, uh, voice analytics, and we would have to do a, a whole new IUP with, which would describe what we're planning to do, and there would be a comment period for that.
Okay. Wonderful. Go ahead.
Thank you so much, Chair Gutierrez. I have one question, uh, just off of that. Is, is NYPD currently using any AI to review footage received from surveillance technology? Body cams, drones?
No. No. No.
That's all. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I, my next question is related to the OIG report. Specifically, this might be also for, for OTI, um, related to, to social media. According to the report, PD creates fake social media accounts to obtain information during investigations. What are the guidelines on how these accounts are used and how are they enforced?
So, there are guidelines. Uh, we have a, there's, there's certainly internal policies about, about undercover, um, accounts. I don't have that at the ready here. What I, what I will say, and I think is important to emphasize, is that in the same way that we do undercover operations, um, traditionally, you know, out, out in the field, so to speak, which involves officers in undercover capacity, um, we also will have officers in undercover capacity, uh, at times on, on, on social media, out in the virtual world, so to speak.
But those guidelines are not made public or they're not accessible?
Uh, no. I, 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 my understanding is those guidelines are not, are not public, no.
Can they be made public?
I'm certainly not gonna commit to that sitting here right now, and I have to emphasize, you know, you can imagine why there would be operational concerns, very significant operational concerns about providing public information about under, how we use undercover accounts. Um, so I, I, sitting here today, can I commit to that? Absolutely not.
Thank you. Um, in the same, in a similar OIG report, social network analysis tools use AI to search and moni- monitor social media. And pursuant to Local Law 35, the OTI shall publish all automated decision-making systems used by agencies, including artificial intelligence systems. However, social network analysis tools were not listed in OTI's report. What is the reason?
I can take that. I, I'll, I'll take that. Our, our social media analysis tools do, do not use AI. We're not, we're not using AI on social media. Um, we do searches and, and we look at relationships between individuals, uh, as part of, as part of investigations. But to the extent the question is, are we applying AI on our sort of social, um, media, social media, uh, searches, um, my understanding is the answer to that is no.
Hmm, okay. Okay. Um, oh, we're doing so good on time, y'all. Um, I want to just ask about, uh, some, some more contract questions. Is every contract with PD related to surveillance technology a part of city records?
Uh, when you say a part of city records, like, you mean that it's?
Is it public?
Um, so any new contract that we procure is gonna have to go into city administrative systems. Procurements generally require public notice. Um, anything over a hundred K is gonna have to have a public notice, both for solicitation and for award. So those things would be publicly available, yes.
Over a hundred K, okay. And is every such, can every such contract be found on checkbook?
Uh, they should, yeah, every procurement we do, uh, when it's registered, will show up in checkbook.
Are there any agreements between NYPD and other agencies to keep the existence of contracts confidential?
Not to my knowledge.
Do you know if you have any existing FOIL requests related to contracts or?
Uh, and we certainly get a number of FOIL requests. I don't have, like, any information about anything active.
I am, I'm well aware you get a lot of FOIL requests. What is the, um, so, and I know there are plenty of advocates who will testify on this today, but what is the process for getting a response for said FOIL request? Who, how many people, um, in the agency are working on FOIL requests?
I'll, I'll take that. We have a, a whole FOIL team. I don't have the exact numbers here in front of me in terms of how large the team is. Um, we certainly can get that, we certainly can get you that information.
But you don't know? You don't know how long it takes for a response to FOIL requests?
Oh, sorry, I thought you meant the number of people involved. Uh, the, the time it can take can vary tremendously depending on the nature of the request. There are, there are FOIL requests that are very straightforward. Um, there are FOIL requests that are incredibly complex. Um, it, it, some, some that can be done in a short period of time, some that require, frankly, very significant undertaking in terms of time and resources. It, it's gonna vary tremendously depending on the nature of the request.
Do you know if you have outstanding FOIL requests older than a year old?
So we certainly have a, a backlog. Um, we have undertaken, actually recently, to sort of try to really work through that backlog, put additional resources into FOIL, um, getting additional, uh, individuals to work on that backlog. I, I don't have the data here with me, um, but we, we are working to cut into that backlog.
But do you believe that there are probably requests older than a year old?
It, it certainly is possible, yes.
Older than two?
I, I, I don't know.
You see where I'm going with this?
There is a backlog and we are, we are working on it.
Yeah.
And, and we, and to your point, um, we, we need to cut into that backlog. There is a resource issue here in terms of.
Sure.
Individuals. Um, we have gotten additional individuals, um, assigned to work just on working on this backlog. Uh, and that, that's a project that, that we've undertaken and it is ongoing.
And you don't have a sense of, uh, if that means hiring more people?
No, no. So, so we, um, we've gotten some officers, uh, temporarily assigned to us. They're not permanently part of the legal bureau, but they've come to us, uh, for some period of time just to work on this backlog. That was something we said to personnel. We said, we have, we have a problem here, we have this backlog, we need to really cut into it, um, reduce that backlog. And the way to do that is by, uh, getting additional personnel, uh, to work on that, at least on a temporary basis, and that's, that's what we've done.
Do you have a sense of these are existing personnel members that'll be switching gears to this project or, or brand new hires?
No, no, they're, they're not new hires. These are, these are restricted personnel. These are, um, officers who for one reason or another, um, can't right now be out in the field. Um, and a very, a good way to deploy, uh, their, their abilities, uh, if they can't be out in the field, is to, is to have them working to get through this FOIL backlog.
Great, thank you. Um, my next question is related to, um, in, in the instance where PD is deploying new surveillance technology, is there communication with OTI at some point during that process?
So, my conversations, um, again, when we look to the Office of Technology and Innovation, very intentionally so, we've got, um, subject, the, the citywide subject matter expertise across various verticals. So for example, my answer, my, uh, my area is information privacy. My, my common touch point at the agency level is the agency privacy officer and with whom at, at NYPD, uh, during my tenure, I've had conversations about surveillance technology periodically.
Sure, but in, in, is OTI, in those scenarios, um, giving an approval or consulting? Kind of what, what is that? What are those conversations?
Sure. So I, uh, as I mentioned earlier, uh, Chair, um, the, the agency writ large, uh, generally does not handle procurements for individual agencies. Uh, we negotiate, uh, the agency negotiates, uh, citywide contracts. Um, agency, from, from my, uh, my area of responsibility, agencies are very intentionally empowered, uh, to, uh, to utilize, uh, technology, uh, and, and, uh, in the context of information privacy, through the lens of the identifying information law, uh, with the individual analysis through their particular mission or purpose. Recognizing each agency is the expert of its own, its own field. Uh, my office, uh, is available to provide, uh, feedback, guidance, uh, perspective as necessary to any agency privacy officer.
And in those scenarios where you're, where you are providing feedback, if PD is requesting funding for said technology, that, does that go to OTI for some level of approval?
For, for funding, my understanding is, is no, but again, that's not my area.
Funding the specific technology, equipment or, or program?
Correct. So my understanding of that is, is no. Again, the agency generally does not handle individual procurement, uh, for agencies, and I'm unaware of any procurements for the police department as it relates to surveillance technology.
That sounds right to you all? Does that checks out as well?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, and, okay, well then that changes my next few questions. Okay. Um, I guess my last question is related to social media monitoring. Um, what tools does the PD use for social media monitoring? How much can you share?
So, um, we certainly, in the course of criminal investigations, um, will run searches across publicly available social media. Uh, I think it's very important to emphasize, publicly available. Um, and in the course of a criminal investigation, uh, in the same way that we, we try to get information, you know, out on the street, so to speak, uh, we can also try to do that on social media, um, by, by running searches, um, across publicly available information. And then, and then in particular, um, in this, in the same way you would in a sort of traditional investigation, identifying connections between people that are publicly available. Um, so we, we certainly do that in the course of criminal investigations.
And does OTI provide any guidance, um, for utilizing these, these websites, these publicly available platforms? Or you can, you're, you're utilizing these tools independently, not, you don't, you're not checking in with OTI?
So, um, thank you for that, that clarifying question, Chair, and, and I think it's a really important one. Um, as I mentioned, when we look at that individual analysis on the agency level about, uh, evaluating collections, uh, or disclosures of identifying information, um, empowering the role of the agency privacy officer, uh, we also, uh, as a matter of citywide privacy policy, enumerate a number of privacy principles to help support agency decision-making as it relates to identifying information citywide, uh, with the guidance that agencies consider then in all decision-making as it relates to identifying information, but recognizing, uh, that each individual agency is going to have a unique analysis as it relates to its own mission or purpose.
And that's a good, that's great. That's, I think that's a sufficient answer. Um, is there, just separate from, from this conversation with PD, PD, does OTI provide guidance on this kind of technology, particularly with, um, accounting for bias, like, for example?
So, so thank you for that, that question as well, uh, Chair. I think it, it highlights an important point. Um, certainly in, in, when you're discussing bias, you're, you're, you're likely going to encounter that discussion in the world of leveraging artificial intelligence, for example. Uh, and, uh, as I think the, the council is aware, uh, OTI and the city announced its artificial intelligence action plan.
Yes.
Uh, just about a couple of months ago now, I think, um, which I think is quite a, a, a robust undertaking in terms of very specific action items, um, to develop a governance structure on a citywide level as it relates to the utilization of this new, uh, technology that work, uh, and I think also quite boldly, um, calls for the majority of the called-upon action items to either be completed or initiated within one year from publication, um, including multiple touchpoints with stakeholders throughout that process by virtue of setting up, uh, advisory committees, public engagement, uh, and inclusive of consideration of the very important issue of, of bias.
Thank you. Um, what mechanisms are in place to protect the privacy of individuals who may be inadvertently captured by NYPD surveillance technologies?
I think it's gonna depend on the nature of the surveillance technology. I think something we are very sensitive to, of course, but it's, it's hard to answer that in a global way. It really, obviously that issue comes up in various surveillance technologies. Um, you know, uh, in some contexts, um, you know, when you're getting a warrant for something, for example, they're gonna, the warrant itself and the court order may put in place a variety of, um, restrictions or, um, uh, limitations on, on what we even can do, um, because of, because of those concerns. In the court authorized wiretap in context, for example, uh, there are very, uh, strict rules about minimization, um, uh, on court authorized wiretaps because of the issue that you're, you're identifying in terms of, you know, uh, innocent third parties. But the answer to that really does, uh, depend on the nature of the particular surveillance technology and the, you know, particular issues that might arise.
Is there a process for retaining or deleting any of that data that, for that, those innocent individuals that's collected through surveillance technology?
Right, so it's, it's gonna just depend on the particular surveillance technology. To go back to the court authorized wiretap for, just as an example, um, in the nature of court authorized wiretap, um, you're almost certainly gonna end up sometimes, um, with interceptions of individuals, um, who, who are, you know, innocent civilians. And there are very strict rules, um, uh, imposed by statute as to minimization, uh, to make sure that you're not listening to more of those conversations. Um, you know, to, to the extent you're intercepting those conversations, they're walled off. Um, so, you know, there, there are gonna be rules and procedures in place, uh, but it will, it will vary by the nature of the surveillance technology.
Is there, and in those instances, are people made aware that they're being kept, that their, like, face or voice are being captured in surveillance technology?
So, so again, just using the, the, the court authorized wiretap example, um, the statute actually provides, um, uh, that basically at the conclusion of a court authorized wiretap, uh, individuals who are intercepted on the wiretap need to be notified.
Okay.
Um, so that's, that's an example where, you know, exactly, that those individuals are, are, are told, uh, there's a whole sort of statutory regime for that.
And, uh, does OTI play a role in, in overseeing that, that they have to be told or any of that? Or what, does OTI play any kind of role in that?
For, uh, advising in the context of criminal investigations? No.
For, no, 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 in, in the example of having to notify people, innocent folks, that they're being captured to some capacity in surveillance equipment?
So, uh, my, my understanding is, is no. Uh, the, the, uh, circumstances in which individual notification manifests in the context of, of my area of responsive, of responsibility, uh, is, is when there has been an unauthorized disclosure of identifying information by a city agency. Uh, we provide guidance to agency privacy officers, uh, when and under which circumstances folks ought to be and should be notified, uh, of those occurrences, depending on the data elements at issue.
Thank you. Um, I think, are we waiting for? Oh, she's coming back, okay, sorry. Um, I'm trying to just milk every minute that you guys are here. Um, can I just jump to the, the DAS system, the domain awareness system? Just a couple of questions? Yeah. Um, how do NYPD personnel receive authorization to access that system? And do they receive training on the use of, of it?
Yeah, all of our members have access to the, to the DAS.
Is your mic on? I'm sorry. I can't tell.
It's, I did turn it off, I'm sorry, forgive me. Um, all of our members have, uh, access to the DAS awareness system. They may not know how to work every individual, um, search engine, but a lot of the basic work, our complaint reports, our accident reports, our ADA reports are all linked to the DAS system, so, all, all our officers have, uh, access to the DAS.
And, and do they receive training on it?
Uh, they receive training on how to do complaint reports, how to do accident reports, and then when we develop new, um, um, search engines or new, uh, new protocols, depending on what it is, officers will get trained on it.
I, I do want to emphasize that the domain awareness system, DAS, um, it's, it's, it's bringing together information from other sources, right? I just, there's no confusion. It's not like DAS itself, the domain awareness system, is somehow, um, uh, conducting surveillance. Its other surveillance technologies feed in to the DAS system, to DAS, um, so that a police officer who's trying to investigate something, they, there's one place they can go to and, and bring together, uh, multiple, uh, sources of information.
And, um, do you, is there a way that the agency audits personnel use of this system? Is there any, are there scenarios where members are, are using DAS for personal purposes? I'm trying to get to the, the issue of misuse of this system.
There's a footprint. When you use DAS, you leave. There's a footprint. When you use DAS, you leave a footprint. So if I sign into something right now, it says Jeff Madry signed in, right? So if, uh, if we become aware of some misuse or some misconduct, uh, our internal investigation, our internal affairs do have the ability to go back and, uh, see who looked at what or who used what.
And how, how does the PD address, how do you address that?
Uh, we have strict policies about, uh, um, computer misuse, uh, mis- using computers for personal, uh, business. We have strict policies for that. Officers who are found to, uh, violate that policy, it's a strict punishment.
Okay. And, uh, while the 2021 impact and use policy states that the DAS itself does not use video analytics, biometric measurement technologies, or facial recognition technologies, can data produced by the DAS be utilized by other tools that do use those technologies? Are there screen grabs? Are there still images? Are, are there any way, um, that information on the DAS can be used for any of those technologies?
I'm not sure I totally understand the question. I, I think it's almost the other way around. In other words, we have information we gain from other surveillance technologies that feeds into DAS, and DAS is sort of a repository and a means of bringing together those different sources of information. Uh, I'm not sure if that answered your question, but...
I guess I was asking if the reverse is possible.
Right, but, but, but DAS itself is not a mechanism for, for surveilling anybody. It, it's taking it from other sources and, and bringing it together, so...
And so DAS does not have any capability to share image, video images?
Well, no, I mean, to, to be clear, if, if you're, if you're, if you're watching a video or you see a photo, whether it's on DAS or otherwise, is someone capable of, 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 you know, screen grab or capturing that in some way? Um, yes, and if that's being done, you know, in, in, in an inappropriate way, if it's being misused in some way, as, as the chief said, that, that person is subject to disciplinary action.
And do you, similar, similarly, Chief, to how you're able to see who logged in and like how they're accessing it, are you able to tell when, um, information on the system is being screen grabbed?
I, I don't know.
The technology exists. I just wanna let you know Snapchat figured that out a long time ago.
Right. We, we may not be aware if, if, and I don't know, I can, I can answer that for certain, but we may not be aware if they grabbed just the image, but we will be aware that they pulled the image up. So we'll know that, hey, if there's an image that was compromised, we will know who pulled that image up.
Okay, thank you. I have, um, can I, I'm just gonna ask Tiffany's question and then I'm done. Um, so I just wanna, I know that, uh, Councilmember Cabana asked the question. We didn't get to hear the answer, so I'll just, do you remember the question?
I, I do. I do. I, I said-
You could have had that on the record.
Yes, absolutely. Uh, I, I said that I did not accept the premise of her question, but I also wanted to add that we, we follow the law. We follow state law, city law. Um, to the extent she was suggesting that, uh, are we taking steps to evade, um, requirements under the law, the answer is no.
Thank you.
Chair? Thank you so much. My questions, do I have any other council members who have questions before we release the NYPD? They're 3:30 on the dot. Good stuff. Thank you so much for your testimony and your answering to a question. And now we'll have DOI coming up.
Thank you. Looking forward to the follow-ups.
Next, uh, we'll hear from Commissioner Jocelyn Strauber from the Department of Investigations. Welcome. You may go ahead.
Would you like me to start? Okay. You, you have not sworn me in. I'm just letting you know that.
I told them you were honest.
Thank you, Chair Brewer. I appreciate the confidence. Good afternoon. Uh, my, my name is Jocelyn Strauber. I'm the Commissioner of the Department of Investigation. Thank you, Chair Gutierrez, and members of the Committee on Technology, and Chair Hanks, members of the Committee on Public Safety, for the opportunity to speak about DOI's oversight role with respect to the NYPD's use of surveillance technology as set out in the public oversight of surveillance technology legislation, which I'll refer to as the POST Act. As you know, DOI oversees the operations, policies, programs, and practices of the New York City Police Department through our Office of the Inspector General for the NYPD. The POST Act requires NYPD to produce and publish impact and use policies, IUPs for short, for each surveillance technology used by the NYPD, and directs OIG NYPD to prepare an annual audit of the department's compliance with these IUPs. Today, I will give you a summary of DOI's findings from our first annual report pertaining to the POST Act, speak briefly about the focus of our second report, which is currently in draft, and also share our view of the three proposed bills under consideration today with respect to the NYPD's use of surveillance technology. Before I begin, I want to recognize Inspector General Janine Barrett, who I appointed to that permanent position in August. She unfortunately could not be here today as planned, but I'm very proud to be working with her. She has led the OIG NYPD since January of 2022, initially as the Acting Inspector General, and brings critical experience to this role in relevant areas, including police oversight and accountability, community engagement, and supporting underserved communities. Now let me turn to our November 2022 report, our assessment of the NYPD's response to the POST Act. In November of 2022, we issued our first report pursuant to the POST Act. The report was the result of an in-depth examination in which OIG NYPD interviewed a range of individuals, including NYPD officials, members of the advocacy community, who called for the legislation that ultimately became the POST Act, and experts on various surveillance technologies. For this first report, the OIG NYPD reviewed all published IUPs and performed a section-by-section assessment of one IUP and an in-depth assessment of two selected surveillance technologies, and compared the POST Act to similar statutes in other jurisdictions to better understand other models for achieving transparency and public engagement in this area. While the OIG NYPD investigative team found that NYPD largely complied with the technical POST Act requirements, it also found that the IUPs did not contain sufficient detail to allow for a full assessment of NYPD's compliance with those IUPs, as the statute requires. OIG NYPD concluded that improvements to the IUPs would enable more robust oversight, as well as more transparency with respect to the nature and use of these technologies. Specifically, the IUPs contained certain overly general language that failed to provide sufficiently specific information about the nature of the technologies, the retention period for data obtained via use of the technologies, and the entities with which data can be shared. Per our assessment, the broad and non-specific language within the IUPs failed to provide clear direction to NYPD and sufficiently concrete information to the public in these and other areas. Additionally, OIG NYPD interprets the POST Act to require an IUP for each unique surveillance technology and disagrees with NYPD's view that grouping of technologies is permitted as a general matter. While grouping may be appropriate for devices that use identical or very similar technologies, OIG NYPD is concerned that grouping of related surveillance technologies into single IUPs is inconsistent with the spirit, if not the letter, of the POST Act. Grouping may mask certain unique technological capabilities because they may not be publicly disclosed at all, as they will be deemed covered by an existing IUP. Furthermore, because there will be no new IUP applicable to those new technological capabilities, there will be no opportunity for public comment on those policies. It is also difficult for OIG NYPD to meaningfully accept, meaningfully assess NYPD's compliance with the IUP when the IUP applies to various technologies that could have different functions or capabilities. Based on its review, OIG NYPD issued 15 policy and procedural recommendations to the NYPD in the, in November of 2022. I want to be clear that many of these recommendations went beyond the requirements that the POST Act imposes, and that we made these recommendations to enhance public transparency with respect to NYPD's use of surveillance technology. Equally important, the recommendations are intended to be sensitive to the need to protect confidential law enforcement information. For the most part, as the report made clear, and with the exception of NYPD's practices with respect to grouping, we did not find that the NYPD had violated the POST Act. The recommendations advised the NYPD to issue an IUP for each individual surveillance technology, to ensure that each IUP contains specific information, such as the names of entities with which NYPD can share surveillance data, as well as specific safeguards or restrictions on the use or dissemination of surveillance data, and to describe the potential disparate impacts on protected groups of the use and deployment of the surveillance technology. OIG NYPD also requested an itemized list of all surveillance technologies used by NYPD in order to determine whether grouping of multiple devices or technologies under a single IUP was appropriate. NYPD previously rejected OIG NYPD's recommendation to provide an itemized list of the surveillance technologies that it uses, but the NYPD has since agreed to provide this itemized list. We look forward to receiving that list so that we can further consider the question whether any technologies currently grouped within a single IUP in fact require distinct IUPs. The OIG NYPD recommended that NYPD convene a working group that included NYPD personnel, relevant city council members, and representatives from select advocacy groups with expertise in surveillance technologies to make recommendations to NYPD on any necessary updates to existing IUPs, for example, recommending updates to IUPs to reflect the disparate impact of technologies. Other recommendations included strengthening internal tracking of each instance when NYPD provides an external agency with data collected via its surveillance technologies and other transparency measures. With the exception of, exception of our recommendation that DOI receive an itemized list of technologies, NYPD has rejected all of our POST Act report recommendations. Uh, let me just speak for a moment, uh, to our ongoing role in the auditing process. We understand the relevant and important concerns about the use of surveillance technology in New York City, and we are committed to providing oversight in this important area. I want to be clear that an annual comprehensive inquiry into the NYPD's compliance with each of its three dozen IUPs for more than 80 surveillance technologies is not a feasible undertaking for DOI. For that reason, both in last year's annual report and in the one we plan to issue in the first quarter of 2024, which will cover this calendar year, we are focused on particular surveillance technologies of public interest and concern, as well as broader issues with respect to the POST Act's requirements and NYPD's compliance more generally. In our upcoming report, uh, to be issued in the, in the first quarter of next year, we will discuss NYPD's compliance with the POST Act with respect to a group of technologies of particular public interest, including Digidog and the autonomous robot, which I believe is referred to as K5. Uh, we have reviewed, uh, introductions 1193, 1195, and 1207, which are being considered at today's hearing, and we are broadly supportive of the three bills as they generally track several of our recommendations from the 2022 report. We look forward to working with the council on these bills if they move forward to a vote. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Thank you so much. That was great. I appreciate that. Um, when we, we talk about your testimony in particular, um, you said that, uh, for that reason, both in last year's annual report and, uh, we plan to issue the first quarter, uh, report the first quarter of 2024, you're focused on particular surveillance technologies of public interest and concerns, as well as broader issues with respect to the POST Act requirements of NYPD's compliance more generally. Um, then you went on to say those particular public interests are Digidog and the autonomous robot. Am I correct in saying that those are the two that you're going to focus on in particular?
That, we are gonna focus on those. There are several others that we will be considering as well.
And why, out of all of them, why is it of particular interest to look at Digidog and the autonomous robot?
Well, I think as today's hearing and, and your questions show, there is some public concern about how these technologies are going to be used and deployed. There has been an announcement, you know, that was referenced here today, that this is sort of the beginning of a wave of more technology of this nature. Um, and while fully recognizing the importance of the use of these technologies for public safety, I think there's a, a public interest in better understanding how they work and the rules and regulations that apply to them through the police department's implementation, and that's why we've chosen to focus on those.
Thank you. Um, do you believe that NYPD's grouping of the related technologies into a single, um, IUP can be used to obscure the department-specific use of technology? And what applicable policies apply to what technology?
So I think it can be. Grouping, I think, can obscure not only the, the particular, it can obscure, first of all, what, what are the technologies that are being used, right? Because if there is no, uh, impact and use policy, which also describes the general purpose of the technology and how it's used, if there are technologies that are grouped and therefore not specifically referred to in, in the policy applicable to, to a particular area, let's say, um, then I think it can obscure the types of technologies that are using, that are being used by the, the PD. I, I think this is a fact-specific inquiry, however. There may well be types of technologies that are sufficiently similar, such that the kind of detail that an IUP calls for is not required for each individual device, for example, as, which was the, the language that was used in the police department's testimony. It's entirely possible that describing general types of technology works much of the time. What, what we want to do and, and what our recommendation, and specifically our request for that itemized list, is designed to affect. We would like to know what all of the technologies are that in theory fall within, let's say, one or two IUPs, if there are multiple technologies. And we want to be able to then consider ourselves, how are these used? And does the IUP fully describe and encompass the capabilities and functionalities, the rules that apply to these technologies?
I appreciate that. And, and I'm following you, and, and so, do you think that there's a space in which they don't think that the grouping is, needs to be done, or the grouping that they're doing is sufficient, because they're not looking for what we would be looking for, or the public would be looking for?
You know, there might be. I think the inquiry that we, that we're doing, um, in the upcoming report will touch on this issue because we, we heard today, and my understanding is that Digidog, for example, is included, um, in the IUP for situational awareness cameras. And so we will undertake, as we, as we look at this issue, an inquiry as to whether that is sufficient to describe to the public the capabilities of that technology. And I don't want to get ahead of myself because we don't have a final report yet, but I expect those are the types of questions that we will consider in the report that will come out next year.
Is there ever a time in which, um, NYPD would say, you know, we don't want to do this because of sensitive information and, and a space where DOI would want that information, uh, for a different reason? Does that make sense?
Well, I think in terms of the information we receive, we've, we've developed a very productive relationship with the police department, and I expect we will get all of the information that we're asking for to prepare this report. I could envision situations where there's concern about certain types of, of disclosure of information, or where the police department, and we heard some of this today, doesn't want to go into detail about certain devices because there might be a risk that that compromises a law enforcement operation or interest. I could, I could see that. And, and if, if that comes up, we would have a conversation about that.
And, and as you said in your testimony, that the bills that have been proposed today, uh, would speak to that, or, or at least give us as, as legislators or, and governmental people who have the ability for oversight, you think that those bills would give us what we needed to kind of find that middle ground?
Well, I think the bills track certain- Well, I think the bills track certain of our recommendations with regard to providing more information to the public and with regard to how the IUPs are designed. I think at another time, we could get into more of a discussion about sort of the nitty-gritty of the language of those, of the proposed legislation, because we might have some proposals there. But generally, I think they track our recommendations and they accomplish some of the things that we sought to accomplish in our report.
And they, meaning the, my colleagues?
The legislation.
My colleagues, okay, that's great.
Correct.
That's great news. Is there a place in which, with regards to the bills that were heard today or that were mentioned today, do you think that there's something that needs to be added to what we could be doing to help in that transparency and that accountability? And we can talk about that offline. It could be yes or no. I don't want to keep.
No, I mean, at the moment, I don't think so. I mean, I think the legislation has captured some of what I think are the most important suggestions and recommendations that we made.
What actions can the NYPD make to enhance the public awareness and transparency regarding the deployment of new surveillance technologies and associated public comment periods?
Well, certainly, I think to the extent that they are deploying a new, a distinct surveillance technology, issuing an IUP for that technology provides the maximum sort of public, the opportunity for public input, because there is a draft policy issued. As we heard today, there's a notice and comment period. The department then considers that comment and then issues the final report. I think for circumstances where there's an upgrade, it's important that there be an addendum, and I think we heard about, you know, the department's view on that, and that they would provide that in a situation where the technology is upgraded. I think those are the best ways, under the current framework, for the public to understand the technology. And I think the more information that is provided publicly, within the limits of protecting what might otherwise, areas where disclosure might compromise law enforcement, is the best way for the public to get some comfort about the nature of the technologies and how they're being used.
I very much appreciate your testimony and, you know, the briefing on your, on the report, and so thank you so much. And I'll pass it along to my colleague, Chair Gutierrez.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commissioner, so much for staying this entire time and for your thoughtfulness in your testimony and certainly in your agency's reporting. I also hope that you take back before the release of your report and certainly all the ones thereafter. I think it is, yes, about the use of devices such as Digidog and K5. But I think for advocates and for New Yorkers and definitely for folks in my community, it's when we're seeing the rollout of these technologies at the cost of making what seems like disproportionate cuts to other social services agencies. And so, yes, I think there is mixed reviews on like the purpose of Digidog. And honestly, what the chief said here today, to me, it sounded like, like, fine, it could go upstairs. And there were examples where it works, but I think where you hear a lot of the contention is around, we're releasing all of this equipment, and we're saying it's to keep New Yorkers safe, but we're also making cuts to after-school program and to housing program. So I know that your acute focus as the Commissioner for DOI is this, is like, for specific to the Post Act, but there's a lot more context here as to like why you hear opposition from advocates. It is about surveillance and it is about transparency, but it's also the agency's ability to kind of roll out what they deem our priorities with very little checks and balances, with very little consultation, you heard here, with OTI, that they don't need to do it and they're not going to do it. And what I appreciated from your testimony and from the report is, they didn't buy outside of this one piece, they did not violate the Post Act. But as the city's premier safety agency, they should be doing a lot more for the purpose of transparency. They should be doing a lot more for the purpose of invoking trust with New Yorkers. So if any of that is also considered, would love that. In your testimony, Commissioner, you mentioned that PD has finally agreed to provide an itemized list of surveillance technologies. They have not, what has the wait time been like since?
Well, we did make this recommendation in our original report.
In 22.
Which was issued in November of 2022. We have not yet received the list, but I understand that we will receive it. I don't have a specific timeframe.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay. Are there any other key findings from that report in which NYPD, in your opinion, did not, you know, meet the standards of the Post Act? The spirit, I think you said this in your testimony, I appreciate it, is, you know, the Post Act is a very explicit piece of language, but there is a lot more behind that spirit. Are there any other things that you would like to highlight from that report that they didn't do? Out of the, how many recommendations that you made that?
We had 15 recommendations, so. You know, actually, there isn't anything that goes beyond sort of what I already said in my testimony. I mean, I think the focus here and the value, one of the key values that our reports serve is to bring some of this information to the public and make clear where there is more information, more transparency that the police department can provide.
Okay. And have there been any, have there been any identified changes in how the PD is publishing or updating their IUPs since the last report was released?
So I think to the extent that with respect to the IUPs that we're examining for the upcoming report, if there are changes of that nature, we will note those. There's nothing I can point to right now that I can identify as a change in practices, but we will be thinking about that, you know, as we prepare the upcoming draft.
And does OIG NYPD have access to all contract agreements in terms or conditions with vendors of surveillance technologies?
So one of the things that we requested in our report was that we have those terms and conditions. I do not think we have those at the moment. Now, that doesn't mean that if we make a specific request for those things in the context of, for example, the upcoming inquiry, I'm not saying we've asked for it and we're not getting it, but as a general matter, our proposal was that we receive all of those contracts so that we can review them and see what sort of retention requirements and protections those vendors build into their systems. And we do not have those yet.
Nor have they agreed to provide that.
I don't think they've agreed to provide those. But we are, we do remain, as part of our process with the police department, we are in a very consistent, regular dialogue with them about all of our outstanding recommendations. And I'm optimistic, now that we're getting the itemized list, that perhaps there'll be an opportunity to get some more of this information.
Great. My last couple of questions, Commissioner, are related to the public process of amendments to IUPs. I know you said, I know the chief said, like, these public, this public engagement process or public comment process exists and considerations are made. Is DOI present for these, like, public?
We are not part of that process. My understanding is there's public comment, public, to the extent the public has input, there are members, I believe, of the legal department at the NYPD that consider that input and then work on the policies accordingly, but we have not been a part of that process.
I'm just interested in the realities of like how much of the public comment they're integrating into their IUPs. I believe that for the advocates that are, that have been in support of the Post Act since it was first introduced years ago, obviously, I think they're, this is on their Google Alerts, they're following this, they're showing up, but, you know, the sake of having, you know, saying that there's a public comment period for the sake of it and having none of it be realized in the IUP, for example, and I'm not saying that that's happening, I'm just curious if you have an understanding of how much of that comment, of the public's comment, is integrated into their amendments of IUPs.
I know we made some reference to this in our 2022 report because we looked at the volume of comments, and there were actually a couple of changes that were made that I think that did relate to the comments that came in, but I'm not in a position to sort of give you a real sense of, you know, the extent of the changes that are made based on the public comments sitting here today. I just don't know.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have any questions from members?
Yes, we do.
Oh, Councilmember Holden.
Councilmember Holden?
Thank you, Chairs, and thank you, Commissioner, again, for staying. And just a couple of questions on, well, NYPD was really against intro 1207. They said it was vague. Do you consider, did you find anything vague in 1207?
Well, I think perhaps the language, if we were working with you on the language, there's a reference to the fact that even if there's overlap with capabilities and functionalities of other technologies, there still needs to be a distinct IUP. And I think we could, in a future discussion, maybe have some ideas about that language so that it's clear, if this is the council's view, I think this is our view, that if there's substantial overlap with the functionality of another technology, then it's not our position that there needs to be a separate IUP. It's where you're really talking about something distinct, and I think this is a line drawing exercise, but working on language that sort of captures that perhaps a little bit better is something that we'd be happy to contribute to.
So since we were talking about the Digidog, let's say that your concerns would be if they added something else to it, some other that they don't have now. I don't know what exactly they have on that, on the dog. You know, for instance, tear gas, if they added that, if they added something else, that would be a concern, or would it? Because I did buy the idea that because the dog can climb up the stairs, you know, R2D2 couldn't, right? I mean, there's technology that we need sometimes because there are, you know, obviously stairs to climb, and that's a valuable robot, actually, to do that. So what else would be concerning to the dog, really? That it has no weapons on it, it maybe has cameras, obviously, but what else would be, like, let's say, for instance, in your studies?
Right, so I can't get too far ahead of myself here because we're literally in the process of working on a report on this, but I just want to be clear that I don't think the tech, I think I share your view that to the extent technology serves a valuable law enforcement purpose, it's a good thing. And I'm not concerned about the technology itself. I think what we're saying is, if the Digidog is captured and described in the situational awareness camera IUP, does that document really tell the public enough about Digidog? Or are there features of Digidog that are kind of not made clear to the public because Digidog is included in an IUP that's really focused on situational awareness cameras? And Digidog might be a camera, but it might be more than that. And what we'd be looking to say is, if there's more than that, is that sufficiently disclosed?
Right. But again, it's what you just mentioned, is that if we give too much information on the dog, then the bad guys would know how to maybe defeat it, or what it could do, or throw a blanket over it. You know, there's a number of things that I think we don't want to give away.
I think there's a balance there.
Yeah, and that's the key here, because, and that's why you're important in drafting new, you know, obviously, the Post Act, they actually, you said yourself, they were within the Post Act, right?
That's what we found, for the most part.
For the, okay, for the most part, but your recommendations, where they weren't, they rejected that?
They did, yes.
Okay.
Although, we've had some progress now on receiving this list of technologies, which was one of our recommendations, and we're going to continue to have a dialogue with them and hope that we can make some more progress.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Thanks so much.
Councilmember Brewer?
Thank you very much. I am, I know you mentioned this is dog and the robots, but are you not also looking, because I have to say, I'm more interested in the facial recognition drones and other kinds of surveillance. Are they also part of your discussion?
So we address facial recognition in our 2022 report.
And you got answers on that?
Um.
I mean, your recommendations?
Yeah, we made, actually, I was just looking back at the report, we don't, our recommendations are not specific to facial recognition, but we did, with, actually, that's not, that's not correct. We did make recommendations as to facial recognition, and some of those have been taken up in the proposed legislation here, and we're appreciative of that. So we recommended that there be an auditing process and that there be a published policy and procedure relating to how the conduct of facial recognition work is done. So we did address that in 2022. That's not something we're currently planning to address in the upcoming report, in some future report. Of course, we could take a look at it. We're also, as far as I know, not specifically focused on drones. Again, that is something that we could look at in the future.
Okay, because what you're saying on the facial recognition is that the recommendations were not necessarily abided by, but the legislation that's proposed, but the police department should have done it, not the city council. That's why I'm confused.
Well, we made recommendations to the police department. It certainly was within their power to do those things, even if they were not required by the Post Act. For the recommendations, obviously, we're always grateful when the city council agrees with some of the recommendations we've made and considers, you know, making those part of legislation. That's what's happened here with the facial recognition recommendations.
Okay. And are there other technologies popping up that you're aware of? Obviously, we didn't know about the dogs until recently that should be considered in the future. Do you have any suggestions about that, or?
You know, I can certainly say, although I don't have the complete list of them here right now, that in addition to the robot and the dog, we are looking at a couple others at the moment, and those will either be in a report in the first quarter or a subsequent report. So we are certainly alert and watching for these things as they're announced.
That's what I wanted. Even things like cameras, because one could track somebody from New York to Florida with cameras easily, according to NYPD. Is that something that comes up under Post Act, or that's not covered because it's not?
Well, if you're referring to, there's a technology called license plate readers or LPRs, and I think that's probably what you're referring to when you say, like, to the extent that numerous, you know, states have that kind of technology, you can track someone who's driving, you know, from point A to point B. We did look at LPRs in connection with our initial report, and we had some recommendations relating to being more specific about how long that data is retained and that kind of thing. So we have looked at those.
Do you have access to all contract agreements and terms with vendors of surveillance technologies? Is that something that is both part of your request and answered?
So.
I'm a big focus on contracts.
We have not received all of the contracts for all the technologies. That was one of our recommendations, and we have not received those. We're going to sort of restart that dialogue now that we're getting the itemized list of technologies. I think it would make sense for us to have the vendor contracts that go along with them to the extent that they are sourced from the outside, which many of these technologies are, to the point that you were making earlier.
So in your first report, and I should know this, did you ask for that, or only now are you asking for these contracts?
No, we asked for that. That was one of the recommendations in our first report.
And you did not get?
We did not get it.
That's a problem. Thank you very much.
Okay, and with that, thank you so much, Commissioner. We are excited for the release of the next report. Well, we'll do this all over again next year, hopefully. And I also just want to thank OTI, Stacy, thank you so much for staying. And this concludes, this concludes, right, the agency portion, and I think we can go straight ahead to the public testimony?
No breaks. Power through, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
For the public testimony, we're going to start with Michael Zizinski from New York Civil Liberties Union, Jerome Greco from Legal Aid Society, and Nina Loskejian from We're going to make three minutes available for individuals to testify, and you're free to submit written testimony as well. Thank you.
You can begin when you're ready.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair. My name is Michael Zizinski, Assistant Policy Counsel, or Assistant Policy Director with the New York Civil Liberties Union. So we'll be submitting full written comments for the record. I'll focus my comments today on a few things that we observed with the overall compliance or lack thereof with the Post Act and the NYPD's policies, and also address some of some points that came up in the discussion earlier and hopefully clarify some issues for the council. So I just wanted to start with the big picture. The Post Act was a first step towards getting a better understanding of the NYPD's approach to surveilling New Yorkers, and it was really not that much of an ask. This was basic transparency. This was a really clear and simple assignment, and it's, excuse me, it's an assignment that the NYPD failed. When we reviewed the NYPD's Post Act policies when they were first published, the drafts in 2021, you know, we observed so many issues in terms of the department's attempts to evade those minimal transparency mandates in the act. This included inaccuracies and misleading statements, omissions, that occurred throughout these policies. So I want to touch on a few things. There was some conversation earlier around whether the department uses artificial intelligence or machine learning. In the first draft of the NYPD's policies, pretty much across the board, there was a statement that the department does not use artificial intelligence or artificial intelligence or machine learning in those policies. When it was pointed out to the NYPD, in our comments, in comments from many of our partners, that in fact facial recognition is reliant on those very processes, that ShotSpotter, which the NYPD operates, has an entire section devoted to the technology's artificial intelligence and machine learning capabilities on their website. The NYPD simply just removed any references to artificial intelligence and machine learning from their policies going forward, basically saying, well, there's not an accepted industry-wide definition, so we're just not going to even acknowledge these capabilities at all. There were major issues in terms of the department's approach to considering the potential disparate impact from these policies, which was a crucial reason that communities were pushing for the Post Act in the first place, to understand how these policies were actually impacting communities. The department basically used the same boilerplate, copy-and-paste language, saying that there were no disparities in any of their uses of the technologies, and claimed that, in their interpretation, they were only required to consider whether the policies themselves and not the underlying technology was actually capable of producing disparities. But to the extent that these policies are supposed to contain the rules and procedures for how these technologies are used in practice, it's very clear that the council's intent all along was to consider the ways that these technologies could be weaponized against communities of color. And, you know, the copy-and-paste language that went into this-- there was talk earlier about how it could be confusing if the department were to do, you know, less boilerplate approach and not repeat the same kind of clauses over and over again. It's really the case that, you know, the-- it's actually much more confusing for the public to understand what these technologies are and how they operate, and what their impact is. And, you know, the-- to the extent that the department was claiming that this is providing more clarity and more information for the public, in their initial draft, which, you know, they corrected, their disparate impact policy on unmanned aerial systems actually included a reference to a different technology because they had been simply copying and pasting. So this is a-- this is a law-- I know my time has expired, so I'll wrap up-- this is a law that the NYPD has never had any real intention of implementing and complying with, which is why it's really incumbent on the council to take further action. We support the recommendations from the Office of the Inspector General and that are contained within the bills before the council. And it's really critical that the council actually legislate on this. We know the NYPD has a long track record of rejecting OIG recommendations. We don't anticipate that without council action, they will improve their practices. And I want to just emphasize that this is also a point where-- you know, again, the Post Act was a first step towards transparency, but it was also a first step towards further regulation and restrictions on NYPD activities. The transparency is an important goal, but it is not the goal in and of itself. We need to be using these reports, this information, to better regulate and restrict and ban certain practices by the NYPD, including imposing bans on things like facial recognition and getting a better handle on exactly how New Yorkers are policed and surveilled. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Gutierrez, and thank you for organizing this important hearing. I'm a staff attorney at the Surveillance Technology Oversight Project, and we are here to support Intros 1207 and 1193, and to continue to work with your office, hopefully to amend them into the strongest versions possible. The Post Act was an essential first step, as Michael noted, in gaining greater transparency over NYPD's use of repressive surveillance against Black and Brown New Yorkers. While it was just a first step, it was still a landmark bill because it reasserted the council's indispensable role in overseeing NYPD operations. The council must now again reassert its authority to ensure that the bill it fought so long to implement is not totally ignored. Three years since its passage, it is clear the department has blatantly disregarded the law's requirements. Its IUPs consist largely of boilerplate language not specific to each individual technology. And I just want to pick up on something that Michael noted. The department today described having to do additional IUPs as something that would be-- or cause repetition and confusion. What is repetitive confusing is their current approach to IUPs. That's not the reality of what would change by requiring additional IUPs. And this failure to comply has detrimental consequences. Because of NYPD's secrecy, we don't know what private contractors get access to our info. We don't know how much disparate harm to vulnerable communities the NYPD thinks is acceptable in its surveillance tools. And that's incredibly disturbing, especially given the example Councilmember Stevens cited today of the gang database being 99% Black and Latinx. We support the language that was taken directly from the OIG's straightforward recommendations in their department-- in their report, sorry. These recommendations reflected clearly how the department can and should change its practice to adhere to the law. NYPD's surveillance arsenal is expanding rapidly in violation of the Post Act. Mayor Adams is constantly rolling out new spyware that costs the city millions of dollars, and as you highlighted, at the same time, cutting back funding from crucial services. To truly protect New Yorkers, the city council must fully outlaw discriminatory surveillance technologies, including facial recognition, fake police social media profiles, drones, and other spyware. But while we wait for such bans, the very least New Yorkers deserve is transparency. We urge the council to listen to advocates and the OIG in taking urgent steps to ensure the NYPD follows the rule of law. And just one final note is that when the original Post Act was being considered, the NYPD was so adamant that this would-- the sky would fall, it would be a roadmap to terrorists. And in their testimony today, very interestingly, they said that the Post Act has not impeded its counterterrorism efforts. So it's just proof that the NYPD will continue to say the sky is falling whenever it is held to the lowest standard of accountability, and that can't be reason to not hold their feet to the fire.
Thank you. That was great, yeah.
Hi. Thank you for having me here today. I'm Jerome Greco. I'm the Digital Forensic Supervising Attorney at the Legal Aid Society. I'm going to address two things that I think the Legal Aid Society is particularly well-equipped to address. The first is related to the contracts that the NYPD has kept secret. There was a lot of testimony here today that is inconsistent with what I know for a fact to be true, based on hearings and lawsuits that are still ongoing. So the NYPD, along with the Department of-- along with the DOI, the Comptroller's Office, the Mayor's Office of Contract Services, Office of Management and Budget, and the Law Department, had an agreement for 13 years that allowed them to keep secret a lot of these contracts. Talking about thousands of pages of contracts. After the Post Act passed, the Comptroller's Office at the time withdrew from that agreement. But it's my understanding that the other agencies are still part of it in order to keep secret these-- all these different surveillance contracts. We were able to obtain many pages-- again, thousands of pages from the Comptroller's Office-- of these contracts. But as part of that agreement, the comptroller was only allowed to hold on to copies that the NYPD had redacted. And so some of these, we don't even know the names of the companies and how much money the NYPD was giving to them from taxpayer money. We subsequently sued the NYPD under an Article 78, which we recently court ordered-- ruled in our favor. And now the NYPD is appealing it. So when they sit here saying, we don't know what you're talking about, about secret contracts, they are literally in active litigation with us to prevent us from accessing copies of those contracts to even find out the names of the vendors. And so it's baffling for them to say that and frankly have the gall to say that. Related to the facial recognition technology, you know, they keep referring to this NIST study, which, by the way, they never actually cite anywhere. But they allegedly gave the OIG NYPD. And they use this to say that this human process that they have proves that this facial recognition is okay, that it's not the problem we think it is. However, the OIG NYPD report said, "OIG NYPD reviewed that study and concluded that it does not support NYPD's claim that human observation can remedy erroneous software matches." In fact, to the contrary, the study does not address human observation except to say that the interaction of machine and humans beyond the scope of this study, as is human efficacy. So they're citing to a study that literally does not say what they say it says in order to justify what they're doing. And in the reality of it is, is that they are just compounding bad identification procedures on top of bad identification procedures, ones which would never be admissible in court, in order to justify an investigation in which then there is zero procedure for what happens after that. It's not, can you stop someone's car based on a facial recognition match? Can you stop them on the street? What deboard level does that get? What level of interaction can you have with somebody? Can you go to their job and interrogate them? There's zero procedure, zero rules from the OIG about that. Not to mention that this investigative lead that they keep referring to, what they actually do is they look at that person's history, and they send it to-- they send a photo to an officer who's previously arrested him and says, hey, do you recognize this guy? Why do you think that officer thinks he's getting that picture? Because he must know who that person is. He has no connection to the investigation otherwise. And he says, yeah, I know that person. I previously arrested him. That's what then they're going to make an arrest. That's not a legitimate investigation. And for them to say, well, it's only an investigative lead, as if it doesn't direct their investigation and that they don't essentially launder it through this fake identification procedure is ridiculous. So Legal Aid Society supports strengthening the bills that have been presented, particularly 1193 and 1207. And we hope the council will take it up into the new term.
Thank you. And I thank you for your testimonies. I have it here. Can I just ask one question related to the IUP process? Because I think, obviously, some of the bills are trying to strengthen kind of how they amend these IUPs, what they're including, and to specify what they're used for, these specific technologies. What is this, like-- what is the public testimony process like? Because I'm very curious if, obviously, they're just taking public record of it. And like, I would love to see where public testimony is integrated into some of these amendments. I'm not sure if they're happening. But what can you say in your experience of these-- of this, like, public portion?
So I can say that it's only happened once so far, and that was when they--
There's only been one public portion, but they said today they've made various amendments.
Right, but those amendments have not been subject to public commentary.
That's right. That's right. Only the new ones.
Right. And so only when they initially released the 36 was there any public commentary period. And for-- I know for us, we submitted close to 50 pages of comments, which seemed mostly to have been ignored. I think other people felt similarly. I do know, for example, when certain issues were pointed out-- I think, Michael, we were talking about earlier about they're saying artificial intelligence and machine learning weren't being used, and they were called out on that. Instead of defining that or fixing it, they just removed that statement, which seems to be the least-- the path of least resistance.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Jonathan Lamb with Amnesty International, Ivy Dyson with the Brennan Center of Justice, and Elizabeth Vasquez from Brooklyn Defender Services.
Good afternoon. My name is Elizabeth Daniel Vasquez, and I direct something called the Science and Surveillance Project at Brooklyn Defender Services. My job every day is to work with criminal defense attorneys, family defense attorneys, immigration attorneys, housing attorneys, to understand the ways in which the NYPD is using technology, the ways in which they are surveilling our clients, and the information that they are collecting. When the Post Act passed, we felt like this was going to be an incredibly positive step towards getting some more transparency around what has always been an incredibly opaque system of buying, procuring, implementing, and rolling out technology that we had no notion of until it would show up as potentially a set of letters in discovery. And then we would be left to be like, what is that? And try to figure out what's going on. When the Post Act impact and use policies came out, what we were left with was 36 repetitive statements that didn't give us much insight. But there were a couple of things that I think are worth flagging here. I agree with everything that folks talked about in the last panel, but what I want to focus on is what we did actually learn from what they said. So the first thing is, today, they chose to focus on the Wiretap Act and to talk to the council about the requirements for minimization that were in that particular provision. When you look at their IUPs, 36 of them, only four do they say that they require court oversight in order to use those technologies. So here, we're talking about aggregate technologies, so many more than just the 36. And what we're getting is four that would have required court oversight. This should cause us pause. It should also make us think about the incredibly important role of the council in reining them in. Because if they are saying to you, we do not have to go to the criminal court to ask for permission to do these things, then you are the only ones that stand in the way of them and the information collection that they are engaged in. The second thing that we learned from these impact and use policies was they actually did, perhaps accidentally, track the way that they were sharing information across systems within those policies. And so to your question, Councilwoman Gutierrez, when you were asking about the domain awareness system, and they kept saying, no, no, the domain awareness system is not a surveillance tool. It's just ingesting everything. That was revealing, because it's not just the domain awareness system that is doing that. And when you look at all 36 policies, what you start to see is that the technologies are important in the sense that they are grabbing data streams. But where are those data streams going needs to be the next set of questions that we ask. And they have done everything they can to not come to accountability on the answer to that particular part of this question. Because when they say, we're not using machine learning or we're not using artificial intelligence, what they're really trying to obscure is that they have collected all of this data in order to act upon it. They act upon it using machine learning products. They act upon it using their own search capabilities within the domain awareness system. But they are not just collecting this data for no purpose. And so it is critically important that the council start to think, not just about banning individual technologies, but about fully reckoning with the way that the NYPD obtains the data, how long they are allowed to keep it, and what purposes they are entitled to put it to. I'll stop there.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Good afternoon, Chair Gutierrez. My name's Ivy Dyson. I serve as counsel at the Brennan Center for Justice in our Liberty and National Security Program. As part of our focus on government oversight and accountability, we advocated for the passage of the Post Act. But unfortunately, the NYPD, as you know, has consistently evaded the act's disclosure requirements while continuing to expand its arsenal of surveillance technology. Members of city council have introduced two bills that aim to strengthen the Post Act, in which we support. But we believe there are additional common sense changes that the council should make to ensure that the NYPD surveillance does not go unchecked. So to date, the NYPD has used generic language in its Post Act disclosures to explain how it shares surveillance data with outside actors, such as federal immigration agencies and city housing authorities. City council must require the NYPD to share more information on how external agencies access its surveillance data and whether there are restrictions on how that data is used, such as how long it should be-- can be kept, whether it can be copied, and if any other entities can access surveillance data the NYPD has transferred to external agencies. As put forth by the NYPD Inspector General, the police should also maintain an internal tracking system recording every instance in which the department provides an external agency with surveillance data. And the NYPD must publish any known safety hazards for each surveillance technology it uses. And finally, the city council must address the NYPD's failure to provide meaningful information on the potential disparate impacts of its surveillance technologies. The NYPD has a history of discriminatory surveillance, and the department continues to use facial recognition technology that has led to wrongful arrests of Black Americans across the country based on racialized errors. The NYPD must provide more information on the disparate impacts of the surveillance technology it uses, specifically, any variations in accuracy of the technology based on a characteristic protected by New York City human rights laws, such as race or religion. I also want to highlight something that you brought up earlier, Chair Gutierrez, about the NYPD's open FOIL requests related to surveillance and activities and, you know, social media monitoring activities. The Brennan Center filed FOIL requests in 2020 related to the NYPD's use of social media monitoring and social media monitoring tools. And I know there are other advocates who are here in the room who filed many FOIL requests related to surveillance, surveillance policing, and have open requests that have still been unanswered, or have had to file an Article 78 petition for every single request because they've not received adequate information. And so this is another reason why Post Act compliance is so important, so that we have an actual mechanism where the NYPD has to be held accountable for the surveillance technology it uses. And the City Council passed the Post Act in response to public demand for greater police accountability, and it must now strengthen the law to ensure that police can no longer evade the transparency that New Yorkers deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ivy.
All right. Good evening, Council. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to testify on the use of facial recognition technology in New York City. My name is Jonathan Lamb. I'm a freshman at Cornell University. I was born and raised in Jackson Heights, Queens, and I'm here today as a student activist leader, a part of Amity's International Banda Scan Task Force in New York. Our task force, our task force's work has focused on the use of NYPD's use of face recognition technology, its abuse against marginalized communities, and its attack against our common privacy rights. Amity International launched an ambitious effort called Decode Surveillance New York NYC. This effort mobilized thousands of digital volunteers to find and categorize CCTV cameras throughout this city. In addition, they worked and investigated these findings with data scientists, geographers, three D modifiers to analyze this data, and as a result, the results were very shocking. The task force found that the NYPD has been using face recognition technology in over 2,022 cases from 2016 to 2019, half of which came from 2019 alone. And this issue has affected marginalized communities in New York City the most. Through our analysis and research, we also found that areas in communities of color that have seen brutal police policing tactics are likely to be more exposed to invasion facial recognition technology. When looking at the Bronx, Brooklyn, and Queens, the most diverse boroughs in the city, our data shows that communities of color have the highest concentration of facial recognition CCTV cameras. Even when Black Lives Matter protests were occurring during the pandemic, protesters risked high levels of exposure to face recognition, oh, face recognition technology. Only two months ago, we saw that face recognition technology were finally banned in New York State schools statewide. As someone who went through the New York City K-12 public school education system and who went to a school that was overpoliced, it's time that we look into facial recognition technologies out of broader communities, so our community members, especially BIPOC youth, feel safe and protected. With the rise in protests and public demonstrations due to current political conflicts, it is so important that we're protecting youth activists who are participating in these actions and basic First Amendment rights. According to the New York City, the New York Civil Liberties Union, there are plenty of research that's demonstrated how inaccurate facial recognition are, and there's a risk of cooperation between ICE and the NYPD. As a son of Vietnamese refugees and coming from Jackson Heights, a predominant immigrant community with a high immigrant population, it is so vital that we are visioning, envisioning public safety that does not foster xenophobia and discriminatory practices towards community members. We need to enact 1207 and 1193 in order to hold the NYPD accountable for the usage of facial recognition and transparency. There's much needed urgency reforms that are needed for the Post Act. The usage of facial recognition technology is not a political issue, but it's a human rights and public, and public safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for sticking around and testifying. Appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you all for your testimony. We're going to do a combination panel for folks on Zoom as well, but we'll hear from Tawaki Kamatsu, Raoul Rivera, and Andrew. We also have online, I'll just read out your names so you're ready, Christopher Leon Whoever wants to go first, may go ahead. Christopher Leon Johnson, are you available?
Are you available?
Oh, there you are.
Oh, there you are.
Christopher?
Christopher.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, but he's not responding, so I think we should just take one of the individuals who are present and, yeah. Okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Raoul Rivera. I'm a New York native, TLC driver advocate, and just want to get a quote out of the way before I forget it, because I kind of forget it a lot. "Humans first, technology second, today, tomorrow, forever." I repeat, "Humans first, technology second, today, tomorrow, forever." So, we're concerned about the NYPD, and so am I. We don't fully trust them, but we have to say that we need cops in the city. New Yorkers need cops in the city. And when we have elected officials who are voted in, and just because you're voted in, that doesn't automatically make you a leader, because I don't see all you council members as leaders. We do have some that are, and we have others that are not. When we have our, and, and that's not to say that New Yorkers agree with me, but there's a lot of people that do see each and every one of you as leaders. And if you're gonna say, "Defund the cops," that hurts New Yorkers. That hurts a lot of people. That hurts the NYPD. And when we have a public advocate who can't stand the police, that's a big problem. When we have council members that call for the abolishment of cops, that's a big problem. Maybe reform, but not abolishment. We need cops in this city. I don't know if you guys know, but Jumani Williams lives in an army base. Jumani Williams, the public advocate. He lives in an army base. He's well protected. Us New Yorkers are not. And when you say, "Defund the cops," you are hurting New Yorkers. So we say that if you want to be a true leader, you do not do that. That's what we ask. We start with common sense stuff. Me, I'm a lover of technology, but we put humans first, technology second, today, tomorrow, forever. We ask our council members to stop saying, "Defund the cops," because when you do that, you're telling people they could go into the stores and, and take whatever they want, to disobey the law, to ignore the cops, to disrespect the cops. I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. It looks like we got the gentleman on, online, so we're going to turn to him before passing it off back to here, okay? So Christopher Leon Johnson, you may begin.
Johnson, you may begin.
All right, what's up, everybody? My name is Christopher Leon Johnson. On the record, thank you, Chair Gutierrez, beyond the, for sticking with us for all this time. Hope you have a happy holiday for the end of the year. I'm here to make this clear personally, you know? I appreciate the committee, you know? I understand how the NYPD, they was dodging, digitizing, dodging us, the voters, the constituents, because they don't want to really answer why they spying on New Yorkers. It's just not just the stuff that they doing with the, with the fake social media accounts and the over-the-top cameras and body cameras and all the type of, type they do to surveil us, not only hurts minorities, it hurts everybody. It hurts every race, every color, every creed, every culture. We just can't make it just about Black and Latino and gay people and Asian people. It's got to be about all people, including white people. So everybody get affected by the, by the body cameras and all the cameras. What I believe that should happen, that should start happening more, is that it should be more real transparency of how these, about how obtaining the footage of interactions with police. I know that there's a lot of instances of where people that file for FOIL requests and NYPD actually rejects the FOIL requests. And we need to really start making, make it more hard for the NYPD to, and the help of the, and the NYPD Law Department to rig the cameras and destroy footage and edit footage. If they, the footage should be transparent for all of us to see if it gets out there like that. You know, that's what should be happening a little more with the, with the spying, with the, with the cameras and with the footage. Yeah, we need to stop this surveillance on people. I, I think it's, I think it's stupid and it's, it's not transparent at all. The city, I know the problem is that, you know, like I said, that we have a city council, you know, they have their, their hearts, their intentions in the right place of trying to stop the stuff with, with spying on New Yorkers, but the, the real political support is not there. Because none of these council members, and we all know who they are, they're scared of the police union. All they care about is pander into the police unions and try to keep their endorsements, which I think is kind of stupid, because the endorsements of the PBA are not even that effective in New York City. You know, I don't, I don't, it's like, it's the rate of success for the PBA endorsement is like abysmal. Even Marjorie Velezquez, who had that endorsement, she lost to Chris Martin Morrow in the general election, even with the PBA endorsement. So I don't get why that, you know, this stuff, you know, we need more transparency with NYPD and, you know, bills like this, stuff like this need to be heard a little more often. I wish there was more people that was, that was courageous enough to be on here and speak against this spying, but I understand that people scared of being doxxed by the NYPD and the help of the, their little snitches and all over the social media and on the streets. But I appreciate you, Jennifer Gutierrez, for being, being real precautious with the panels, with the panels today, with the online Zoom, that you privatized everything, you didn't put any names out there in the panels. I appreciate it, I understand. But going forward, like I said, like, we need, like, more support with this stuff. People need to come out more and, and testify, other than just us three and the legal people. Shout out to all the nonprofits that are trying to fight this stuff, Legal Aid, Stop Spying, all these other nonprofits that are trying to fight this situation. But we need more people who come out there and testify to stuff.
Your time has expired.
It's expired.
I'm sorry, a few moments, I can stop being scared and come out and testify, and we need Stop Spying in New York City, stop, and stop these rags in NYC. So, thank you, Chair Gutierrez. Happy holidays. Thank you.
Same to you.
Same to you.
Either one of you can-
Hi, I'm Tawaki Kamatsu. I'm a Navy veteran. To lead off my testimony, there's a mural on top of the ceiling in this chamber, and I'm going to change the words a bit. "A government of the empty seats, by the empty seats for the people." At the start of this public hearing, there were a bunch of city council members in the room. How many are here now? Mr. Holden, you're good. Ms. Gutierrez, I just took note that you were using your cell phone in violation of the city council's rules at 4:32 PM while somebody was testifying. So Mr. Holden used to be a teacher. During tests, they tell students, "Put away your phones," and things like that, that can be used for cheating. So with regards to First Amendment rights, deprocess rights, if this is a public hearing, where are the city council members to actually hear from the public? Also, DOI Commissioner Strauber was here. I've been to DOI repeatedly to make valid complaints against the NYPD. DOI is totally useless. This hearing is also about contracts, NYPD contracts. There was a public hearing yesterday about contracts between HRA and various vendors. The public notice says that you can go to HRA's headquarters at 150 Greenwich on the 37th floor to see those contracts. Problem is, I've got litigation against HRA. They're still retaliating against me by not letting me in their doors. So even though it's not relevant to today's public hearing per se, you're the city council, you have the ability to craft legislation, you have the ability to issue subpoenas, you also have the ability, I guess, to override proposed contracts, especially when they're pretty crappy. Sorry for the language. But let me move on. I submitted an exhibit in conjunction with today's testimony. I don't know if, maybe Mr. Holden, you've seen it. This is what I submitted. Basically, I've got ongoing litigation, like I said, against the city. Let me read from some emails in that exhibit. For starters, you currently have Shekhar Krishnan. He's a city council member. He lives in Jackson Heights. I moved into his former apartment. The NYPD, when conducting illegal surveillance against me, also pulled up his name as a former occupant of that same apartment. I previously informed Mr. Krishnan of that. So the point is, if I have no ties with Mr. Krishnan, why in the heck is the NYPD spying on Mr. Krishnan after he used to be a clerk for a federal judge in Brooklyn? So, bottom line is, here's an email that was sent by Jaclyn Rothenberg on June 28, 2017, to Howard Redman, who pled guilty to the felony earlier this year for obstructing DOI's investigation. Confirmed that he appeared at 4WTC on June 6 and served in order to show cause. That OSC and another pending matter were submitted to the court for a decision on June 7. HRA is still waiting for the written decision. Problem is, I had sealed litigation then. Jessica Ramos illegally had access to that sealed litigation, you're the committee counsel who I'm looking at right now. So why in the heck are personnel of the city of New York illegally violating New York Supreme Court Judge Barry Ashigur's January 17, 2017 sealing order? And what is the recourse when personnel of the NYPD come to your hearings and commit perjury under oath while they're sworn? Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Andrew, you may go ahead.
Hello there. My name is Andrew, and I would like to point out that I have nothing against law enforcement. I appreciate the hard work that they do. However, law enforcement has a habit of terrorizing people throughout America. There's a court case that I gave you called Socialist Workers' Party versus the Attorney General, where law enforcement run around the city, making people homeless and getting people fired from their jobs. This is a court case in New York City. And, and there's an additional line that I gave you all, that law enforcement, after people have encountered with law enforcement throughout different states, become homeless or fired from their job or can't find their job. So law enforcement is not only terrorizing me, they got me fired, but they terrorizing Americans as well. So that's why I'm here today, to ask for an investigation of law, into law enforcement, why they keep attacking me. Several times, I asked for a body cam, they refused to give me a body cam. Why is that? Are they trying to hide something? Several times, I have encountered with them. And one time where they had brutally assaulted me on 61st Street in Northern Boulevard in Queens, the cameras just magically disappeared off the building. Incredible. Just like LaQuan McDonald in Chicago, when the police had murdered him, they went to Burger King and they had to release the video. It's amazing how law enforcement keep doing the same thing, state after state after state. So I'm asking for an investigation, I'm asking for a body cam from different incidents that law enforcement had brutally attacked me, not only in New York, but Chicago as well. They keep hitting me in the hospital for, for some strange reason, and also, it's strange how law enforcement, when they want to hide evidence, they like to commit people to the sidewalk. Two people from NYPD, Nella Gomez, a police detective, had evidence against corruption in law enforcement. What happened? Oh, they just committed it to the sidewalk, New York City Police Department, right? Again, this another person has nothing to do with Nella Gomez. His name is Adrian Schoolcraft. Again, had corruption, evidence of corruption of law enforcement. And what happened? They tried to commit him to the sidewalk. Oh, this person is crazy. Again, when people have evidence like me, they try to commit me, commit me to the sidewalk saying that I'm crazy. Hey, you can say anything that you want to say, but just take a look at my evidence. The court case is right here in New York City. The court case says law enforcement make people homeless, they get people fired. I have news clips from different states showing that law enforcement make people homeless when they have encounters with them. And Colin Kaepernick is a football player, because I'm, I'm pretty sure not everybody watches sport. He's a football player protesting police brutality. What happened? Can't find a job. But he's not doing this list here, but other people are on this list who are not well-known as Colin Kaepernick, that lost their jobs. Even a veteran came across law enforcement, he too had lost his job. So I'm asking for an investigation and body cam for your assistance.
Thank you. Can I just ask, have you been connected to legal services yet pertaining to that request?
I tried several times, nobody has helped me. They would say that they would help me, and so far, nobody has helped me do anything, because I'm still being attacked by law enforcement, and I still have no body cam from New York or Chicago, because they want to cover this up.
And what borough do you live in?
I live in Queens.
Queens, okay. Let me make a note of that.
Do you guys have the QR codes?
I have it, yes. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you so much.
And what's your name?
Jennifer Gutierrez.
Jennifer, okay. Jennifer Lopez. Okay, thank you.
If anyone else in the room would like to testify, please come up to the front. Seeing no one else, I'll turn it back to Chair Gutierrez to close out the hearing.
All right. Thank you so much to both committee staff, and thank you so much to the advocates and everyone who signed up to testify online and here in person, and that adjourns today's hearing.